July 7, 2017, meeting of Anaronda County Councils now in session. Please stand for invocation and remain standing for the pledge allegiance. Mr. Peruski, you have the con.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Grasso. If everyone would bow their heads, please. Dear God, in our minds and our hearts, we think with a high sense of patriotism as we approach the Fourth of July holiday. It symbolizes freedom, our devotion to democracy, and it keeps our government a reminder of for the people and by the people, even here in Anaronda County. Grant that we highly resolve we dedicate ourselves to ushering goodwill to help the people of Anaronda County and help those throughout our nation and all mankind. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to take this golden opportunity to introduce myself. My name is John Grasso on behalf of myself and staff and the entire council, but most of all, on behalf of the people of Anaronda County. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, sincerely hoping trust that everyone has an informative and a most enjoyable time tonight. With that being said, Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Okay, we're going to call up Mr. Rick Anthony, who will speak about the ongoing efforts with the heroin epidemic in Anaronda County. Here he comes. You look like you've got a strut going there, Mr. Anthony.
He gets too much.
Let me tell you something. We were doing a 5K race at Fort Smallwood, and I buzzed right on by him, and the next thing you know, I got him, and then he buzzed right on by me. So that's how it was. That was our last run together, right?
That was, and that's why I'm limping to this day. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and honorable members of the council. For the record, my name is Rick Anthony. I'm Director of Recreation and Parks, and I simply have been asked today to talk to you about the county executive's all-out effort to combat the opioid addiction problem that we have in the county and what our department is doing to try to do our part to combat this. Last week, we had a state-of-the-department address mainly focused to our youth organizations in the county at Bratneck High School. We had over 100 youth presidents and vice presidents in attendance. We invited Nancy and Jen Corbett, I believe is her last name, out to share with that group. It was very impactful. We certainly believe that we have almost the largest gathering of youth in the county playing sports, and certainly you all can recall that many of our lives were touched by coaches. So we plan to kind of utilize this opportunity to train our coaches, to bring our coaches up to speed, and how they may be able to impact these young individuals' lives, especially at the ages of elementary and middle school. So beyond that, we're planning a series of meetings with every rec organization in each feeder system, and we certainly are going to continue that effort through the year. So thank you for this time, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any question from the council? Well, Mr. Rick Anthony, like always, thanks for coming out and spending your evening with us. Appreciate everything you do. Okay, what we're going to do now is we're going to open up the invitation to the public if there's any one of you in the audience who would like to address the council briefly on any subject not on the printed agenda. We ask that you please limit your remarks to two minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Come on down. Okay, seeing no movement in the -- there you go. Ms. Johnson?
Governor here.
Okay, got it. Thank you, sir. And you're -- Mr. Peter Kane, is it?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Kane, for coming out. We also have Mr. Chris, looks like Cockrell. All right, you want to take a seat, sir? And of course, we have our favorite, Ms. Johnson. How are you doing this evening, Ms. Johnson? Good for you. Okay, we'll start off with Mr. Peter Kane. Please name and address in two minutes, please.
My name is Peter Kane. I'm at Levin Shipwright Street here in Annapolis, Maryland, and I am here to speak about hate groups. In the past, when attempting to speak about county Councilman Peruca's ties to secessionist hate groups, I've had my microphone shut off, and I've been threatened with arrest. I'm not intimidated, and I will continue to return to these meetings until every citizen in Anaronda County knows these facts. Councilmember Michael Peruca was a member of a group that the Southern Poverty Law Center has designated a neo-confederate hate group. On December 6, 2012, the Human Rights Campaign called Michael Peruca, who at the time was a member of the League of the South, "an active white supremacist and secessionist sympathizer." In 2015, the League of the South hosted an event commemorating the assassination of Abraham Lincoln. And on this Fourth of July weekend, I quote, "A century and a half after the fact, the League of the South thanks Mr. Booth for his service to the South," wrote Michael Hill, the League's president. Peruca was not only a member of this group, he was for a time a board member. So thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate that opportunity to let everybody know the facts about Mr. Michael Peruca, who's sitting here, a member of this board.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, let's see, we have, is it Chris Cockrell? Am I saying it right?
Yes.
All right, thanks for coming out today.
Chris Cockrell, Crofton resident, 2706 Coras Court. This is my first time attending, and I'm planning to attend the next few meetings to address several issues with the Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Anthony knows me pretty well through email. The one issue that I really want to address tonight, though, that I think is important is a loophole within the system that allows for volunteers with records that, under legal jurisdiction, I guess, with probation before judgment on major criminal behavior, still allows them to participate within the system without parents being advised whatsoever of these individuals. I think it's something that needs to be addressed. I don't know if it's going to be through legislation, and again, I don't know if it's something that Parks and Recreation can do anything about, but I do think, you know, there is a distinction when it comes to children between right and wrong, even with the gray area. You cannot take these situations lightly. The one incident that I'm talking about specifically is an individual right now, he was a volunteer with the Crofton Organization. In 2011, for whatever reason, he was given a PB&J from a judge for selling the equivalent of $8,000 in cocaine. And again, under Park and Rec rules, if this would have been a true conviction, this individual would never be able to coach or participate in a volunteer. And again, I think parents need to be made aware, even though it was a PB&J, that a situation like this, because we don't have the resources to find this information our own. That's my time, so thank you.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Cockrell. Appreciate you coming out tonight, too, okay? Ms. Johnson, your two minutes. Name and address, please.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis. I would like to suggest to the people with the Park and Recs that you consider expanding your program to include competitions between the participating kids at the different grade levels to address the blatant and flagrant ignorance of so many people in the history of black and white in this country, because I think that's at least one step toward improving racial relations. I was going to give you a big spiel about, you know, the Declaration of Independence, Battle of Gettysburg, which went on for July 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, and then Lincoln's Gettysburg Address. But unfortunately, I don't have time to do that because I'm here to protest, complain, and probably cry. Someone filed a complaint that my yard is weedy. Happens regularly. Okay, so some stuff is, you know, it's too tall, so okay, we cut it down. I'm cooperative. I won't give you the whole gory detail about trying to get copies of the photos the inspector took so I know what I need to hire someone to do, because in my youth, I loved to garden, but I can't swing a weed whacker anymore without being in pain all night long and no sleep. So ultimately, I'm here to protest the abuses of government, because it turns out, oh, you maybe remember, I told you the story about one of the employees in John Leopold's administration who responded to a compliment that a constituent was really happy. He said, "Oh, we can make some of the people 100% happy some of the time." And he didn't pause a tiny fraction of a second, and he looked at me and he said, "And we can make some people 100% miserable 100% of the time." Ha, 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 ha. You don't know how painful it is. The weedy lot people inform me that they won't chop down my trees, my bushes, my shrubs.
Please summarize, Ms. Johnson, okay?
Or my ivy. However, my flower beds are likely to go, and if I think this is a plant I want to keep, I am supposed to argue with the crew that they have already dispatched and say, "No, no, this has value." And you didn't get, you know, the lecture, "This is a great plant," and you didn't get to hear about how I can't get the permit to restore the berm that was dug up and carried away.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Everybody else has to have their opportunity, okay? Thank you so much. Okay, is there any council member who'd like to place any item on the agenda? I said to myself, "Self, what do you want to talk about?" And I'll take this opportunity. Just want to inform everybody that the Fountain Project is kicking in wild games over in North County, in Marley Creek and Furnace Creek, and for any of you folks that might be living on the waterway and want to aerate your waterway, numerous amount of people have contacted me, asking me where I'm getting those big floating fountains at, so I'm going to tell you, I'm not endorsing this company. I'm just telling you where I buy them from. It's a company called Fountain Mountain, and they have multiple different-sized fountains that you can use somewhere between $250, $300. And if you want to aerate the waterways by your house, it'll help out tremendously. Okay, may I motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of a whole? So moved, Mr. Sir. And I already hear that second. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of June 19, 2017.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman John Grasso at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Fink, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. May I motion to approve the minutes of June 19, 2017? So moved, Mr. Sir. Second. I got it. All in favor? All right, motion carries. Minutes of June 19, 2017 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 6617, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget Board of Education Transfer of Funds.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 2717, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anaronda County College Funding. Resolution Number 2817, Resolution Approving the Declaration of Certain Unimproved County-owned Property Near Glen Heights Avenue in Glen Burnie, Maryland as Surplus Property. Resolution Number 2917, Resolution Approving the Declaration of Certain Unimproved County-owned Property on Veterans Highway in Millersville, Maryland as Surplus Property. Resolution Number 3017, Resolution Approving the Declaration of Certain Unimproved County-owned Property on the Corner of Fiorenza Drive and Mount Zion Marlboro Road in Lothian, Maryland as Surplus Property. Resolution Number 3117, Resolution Urging the Federal Aviation Administration to Modify Flight Paths and Elevations Imposed by Next-Gen Air Transportation System to Pre-Next-Gem Paths and to Place Warnings in the Automated Terminal Information System to Ensure Pilots Comply with Required Altitude During Their Approach to Baltimore, Washington, Marshall International Airport.
Thank you. May I motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on Bill 6017 out of order? So moved, Mr. Sir. All right, get a second. Madam Secretary, you want to fire off the roll, please?
Mr. Fink.
Hi.
Mr. Peruski.
Hi.
Mr. Peruca.
Hi.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Hi.
Mr. Walker.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
And Mr. Grasso.
Hi.
Seven affirmative, none of the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to hear Bill Number 6017 out of order is passed.
Okay, very good. All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 6017.
Bill Number 6017. An Ordinance Concerning the Issuing, Sale, and Delivery of Anaronda County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Marsick, how are you doing today?
Doing very well, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of council, Bernie Marsick in the county executive's office with me at the table, Lori Blair from the Office of Law, Karen McQuade, and Lorraine Tony from Finance, and outside counsel, Bill Hen as well. Bill 6017 is our annual bond ordinance concerning the issuance, sale, and delivery of the county's general obligation bonds and bond anticipation notes. The purpose of this ordinance is to authorize the issuance of bond anticipation notes not to exceed $400 million, bonds not to exceed $1 billion, excuse me, $1,841,2692. This ordinance finances the county's fiscal year 18 budget that was recently approved and will be offering amendments at the appropriate time, because as you'll remember, we introduced this bill before the budget is approved. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Okay. Any questions for the council? Seeing no movement in the crowd. Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to open up public hearing on 1617. If anybody wants to come down and talk on 6017, please feel free to come on down. Seeing no movement in the crowd. Please state your name and address again, please. Two minutes.
Julie B. Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I realize the budget's passed, but I really object to the further indebtedness of people in this county. Who is going to be able to pay for all the accumulated taxes? The federal government is $20 trillion-plus dollars in debt. You know, there are all these unfunded mandates, like the federal pensions that this county plans to depend on, and I just think it's unconscionable for you to forget that it will be us old guys, or even you guys get old like me, and your children and your grandchildren who are going to have to shoulder paying for this extravagance that we can't afford. So I would ask you to be, you know, more considerate of what you're doing to those innocent people.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Appreciate that. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing on Bill Number 6017. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 60-17.
Bill Number 6017, An Ordinance Concerning the Issuing, Sale, and Delivery of Anaronda County, Maryland General Obligation Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing no movement? Okay, we have a couple amendments, and let's see. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1, This Amendment Reduces the Amount of Bond Authority, Corrects Amounts in the Bill, and Corrects an Exhibit, All to Conform to the Final Capital Budget.
All right, motion to adopt? So moved. Second. Got it. Administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, these are the changes made to the bill based on the changes made to the bond program and the capital budget that was recently passed. So these are correcting all the numbers in the bill.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Hey, Mr. Chair. Madam Auditor, I saw the blue letter. I just was hoping you could confirm on the record that these amendments would coincide with the final budget and the intent of the council.
These amendments are in agreement with the final budget, with the exception of the exhibit, which excludes one capital project that was included in the final budget. We are still in the process of reviewing the bond ordinance, and our comments will be included in the next letter.
So if we adopt this amendment or the following amendment, you'll have an additional report to us after that time.
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1. One more time? No, please, excuse me. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Yes, sir. Mr. Fink.
Hi.
Mr. Peruski.
Hi.
Mr. Peruca.
Hi.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Hi.
Mr. Walker.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Grasso.
Hi.
Seven affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number 1 is adopted.
Roger that. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2.
Amendment Number 2, This Amendment Places a Contingency on Authority to Enter into Loans to the County from the State Department of Natural Resources for shore erosion control district projects.
Move to adopt. Get a second. All right, you got that. Administration?
I don't really have much more to add. I think it's pretty self-explanatory is what it does.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Marsick, is this something that's particular to these sorts of DNR loans, or is this just language that got left out of the original draft?
I'll defer to Ms. Blair.
Lori Blair, Deputy County Attorney. We have a new shore erosion control district loan from the DNR, which will be finalized during FY '18, and this language is to address that, because we have a new loan that's coming.
Okay, so this language is consistent with that sort of funding or contingency in general? This isn't something specific that only goes to DNR loans?
It is specifically for the DNR loans that are specifically for shore erosion control projects.
Okay.
The way these work is, the loan is to the county. It's an interest-free 20-year loan. We then enter into an agreement with the community association for the area where the project is occurring. They actually are taxed to pay, there's an assessment to repay the loan, they do the work.
Right.
All of that's part of the agreement.
Like an SCBD or something.
It's just like an SCBD, and it's specifically for shore.
Okay, so this is pro forma language?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 2.
Mr. Fink.
Hi.
Mr. Peruski.
Hi.
Mr. Peruca.
Hi.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Hi.
Mr. Walker.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Grasso.
Okay, Bill Number 60-17 as amended will be heard on July 17, 2017. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2517 as amended.
Bill Number 2517 is amended, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning and Construction and Property Maintenance Code Supplement, Construction Code Administrative Provisions, Agritourism Permits, Agricultural Buildings.
Okay. Make sure I get all my ducks on there. Okay, administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marsick in the county executive's office with me at the table, Lynn Miller from Plaine Zoning, Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law, and Fire Chief Alan Graves. As we discussed at length over the last several meetings, this is an important bill to the agricultural community that we have been supportive of. We pushed this in the beginning. Fortunately, the amendment was offered at the last meeting, it was adopted, that we had opposed. Despite that, we would ask you to pass the bill tonight. We think that there is important goals that were accomplished through this legislation and have been pushed by the agritourism group that we put together, who continue to ask us to push this bill. We do understand that there are concerns, but we will plan to address those concerns with future legislation. Ideally, July 17, we plan to introduce bills to address these concerns, but we would ask you to support this bill and pass it tonight.
Good. I've said once before, I think it's great that you guys came up with that, you know, to move forward on this, because I've always said one of the biggest problems with government is they spend so much time having meetings, they have to actually convince themselves that they've actually accomplished something. So I think we have to put the shovel in the ground, and that's what you guys did, get things started, so my hat's off to you guys, and also Councilman Walker.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Marsick, you mentioned the amendment, the last amendment that got put on. I know you objected to that. I voted against it. Nevertheless, it's part of the bill. I've received, I imagine my colleagues have received, a fair amount of emails and phone calls from members of the community that previously supported the bill, but now in its current form are asking us to oppose it. So an alternative path, I guess, since this is the last meeting for this bill, would be to vote down the bill and introduce a clean bill, but your preference, if I understand it, is to pass a bill which you kind of admit has a flaw in it with the assumption that there'll be corrective legislation.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm a little, I appreciate the concern, because I know how much work and do, I mean, we, I don't know how many amendments we ended up passing, but we went from a bill that almost everybody objected to, to a bill that, at least as the last meeting, there was consensus from all the stakeholders. I'm a little reluctant to support it, knowing that there's a flaw in it, but I appreciate your deference to the amount of work that's come so far. Thank you.
All right, so with that being said.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Mr. Peruski.
Thank you. With regard to the flaw, can you, can somebody on the panel kind of just flesh that out for us a little bit? I, too, like my colleague, have received a number of pieces of correspondence and telephone calls. I've discussed this with a number of folks from both sides of the issue, folks that would like the bill to pass and folks that would like the bill to fail. And I guess, on the one hand, there's this perceived flaw, and that is that there's an open-endedness to the bill as it presently stands. There's a worry, I think, a legitimate worry on the part of folks that before some amendment might, or some amendment or fix to this bill would take place, that there might be some group that would maybe be able to be grandfathered in by the current legislation. Can you address that?
Sure. I think, you know, I've heard the concerns, I've seen the emails, and I've talked to countless people, both for and against the bill. I think the concern about having haunted houses popping up throughout the county is really the concern, based on what I've been told and what I've heard. As I've discussed with many folks on the council, I think that the way this bill is drafted now, I don't anticipate that happening in a way that would be problematic based on the definition of agritourism, that there has to be a principal use as a farm on this, and the agritourism aspect of it has to be an accessory use. I think as we described the last meeting, you know, some of these facilities that are causing concern are 25,000 or 40,000, 50,000 square-foot facilities that would be constructed in some of these areas and would have to go through, you know, permitting issues and fire marshal issues to be built in the county. So I wouldn't anticipate that those would be popping up throughout this, so...
But even if one popped up?
Sure.
Would that be a, is it likely that before some fix would occur, that an organization like that would not be desired, would be grandfathered in because it was able to take advantage of the law the way it is now?
I don't see how that happens, but I don't have a crystal ball, obviously, to, you know, predict exactly how things will play out between now and, you know, the time that the legislation is being put in, that, you know, hopefully it gets considered on September the 5th and passed that night, and then becomes effective just a few weeks after this bill becomes effective, so...
So, okay, I appreciate that. So you're saying that there needs to be, the way the bill reads now, there needs to be some nexus to agriculture, some accessory use, and that something that is a haunted house would not, all by itself, seem to qualify for that, because it's, there's no nexus to farming, or it's not an accessory use to farming.
Correct.
But yet, but yet, the amendment, or the bill as it stands, because it was amended, has the word Halloween in it, right? So which, is there a danger that that would trump the definition of accessory use, since it uses the word Halloween?
Right. I think that, my understanding, and I'll let Ms. Kenny from the Office of Law speak to us as well, is that it would have to be an accessory use in order to qualify as agritourism under this bill. So it wouldn't be a primary or principal use on the property.
Thank you.
For the record, Kelly Kenny, Senior Assistant County Attorney. That question is somewhat difficult to answer, and we talked about this a little bit during the last hearing, and to expand on what Bernie said, the agritourism use has to be accessory to the use of farming. So a haunted house standing alone is certainly not accessory to farming. Some of the scenarios that we talked about the last time, where there might be farming done on the property, or other types of things of that nature on the property, along with a haunted house, that makes the question a little trickier to answer, for the reason that you pointed out, that Halloween attractions and festivals are listed as a specific agritourism use. In my opinion, I do not believe that a haunted house is accessory to farming, but I cannot say that there could not be a circumstance where it could be found to be so, depending on the use on the property and the type of haunted house and things of that nature. But if it's a permanent structure that's constructed via a haunted house, it would not be accessory to farming. I think it would be a stretch for most haunted houses to be considered accessory to farming.
So, and one of the, one of the reasons that that, if I heard you said it correctly, one of the reasons that would be the case would be because there'd need to be a structure built for this, and that that wouldn't qual, that wouldn't, that would take it out of the, that would take it out of what would be permitted now.
Well, and I think it would depend on what the structure is. If it was a brand-new 25,000 square foot structure, as, you know, I've heard people talk about, then, correct, I don't, that, that wouldn't be related to farming whatsoever.
Is the county, can I go back to you, Mr. Marzick? Is the, thank you very much. Is the county working to locate these kinds of functions in commercial areas?
Yeah. As of last week, I saw that there was email traffic between, and discussions between Economic Development Corporation and the folks from Bennett's Curse are looking to find, to find commercial property to locate this facility. There's been discussions with Wreckin' Parks as well, to try to find some type of temporary facility where they could be located as well. I know they're reaching out to a lot of folks all across the county, and we've committed to be working with them. I don't think there's a final plan in place that I'm aware of as to what they want to do and where they want to do it. I know there's a lot that goes into it, and a major financial investment as well, that, from what I understand, that, you know, our economic development staff has been working very closely with them to try to identify, I guess, as of last week, commercial properties where they can locate this.
Okay. Well, thank you, I look forward to the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman. You want to go to Mr. Fink?
Go ahead.
Just have a quick question, Mr. Marzick. Does the administration plan on introducing the fix next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So we will see a bill coming from you guys that removes that?
Yes.
So, and that bill will essentially undo the last amendment from the last meeting?
That's, that, and if there's any other specific items that, you know, again, have to be addressed in some way, yes.
Okay.
That's, that's the goal, though, is that, is the top priority.
Sure.
There may be like a minor tweak to something that comes up, you know, in the final days as far as the existing bill.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Pruski.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just want to follow up. Ms. Muller, one of the things that I've gotten from this is the traffic concern, and I've kind of read, like, the Renaissance Festival, all the things, there's special exceptions, and certainly we can get into that debate. But would you say that if this passes, would planning and zoning allow such a facility on a collector road, as opposed to a main and arterial? Because, you know, when you, when you think about such a facility, and again, I'm not going to get into the debate about what's there, but that's kind of some of the things I've heard from the neighborhood folks. So I don't know, from, from your perspective, how you feel about that, you know, from that end, because you want to get people in and out, you don't want to have any concerns or issues, but I'd just like to hear your opinion on that.
Well, Mr. Pruski, because the bill as, as drafted now would allow haunted houses as an agritourism use, which is specified as a conditional use, but the bill right now does not include a condition that relates to the functional classification of the road, whether it's collector arterial or whatever. So I don't know that we would be able to, you know, there's nothing in the code that is going to limit this type of use to a certain type of road.
And then the other one was the special, special exception. Do you have any opinion on, in regards to haunted houses having to go through that process? Again, I know that that just allows more for the public, doesn't mean it's going to be denied or approved, but I'm just curious if you have a position on that.
Well, I, I think it would depend on how we were to, if we were going to add a new use to the code that we thought would cover haunted houses, in doing that, we would make a determination as to what zoning districts we thought it was appropriate to allow it in. And once you've taken those steps, then you have the discussion as to whether it's more appropriate for it to be special exception, conditional, or outright permitted. So I think it depends on what zoning districts you're talking about allowing it in.
Okay. But those are worthy considerations, obviously, would you say? Would you agree?
I would agree.
Okay. Ms. Kenny, just following up from the legal office for you, so I can be clear, because this can be confusing. Again, I, I'm not an attorney, but I can play one on TV in Anne Rundle County. But in regards to the agritourism piece with this, I know there's a debate on whether a haunted house should be in or not. Obviously, the, whoever does it would benefit from that, but it would be the interpretation of the law office on whether, what the primary use is. I just want to be clear. So say, for instance, it's a 12-month farm that's having operations, and two months out of the year, they're doing a haunted house. Would you argue from the law office that 12 months, it's agritourism, and they're using it, you know, as an accessory? I'm just, I want to be clear on the legal definition of what would be used in terms of how this is viewed from the law office.
Well, to elaborate on what I said before, in going back to the definition of an accessory, agritourism has to be accessory to the primary use of farming, and an accessory use is a use or structure that's customarily incidental and subordinate to another use. So the question really is, is a haunted house incidental or subordinate to the use of farming? If, if you're just answering that question, the answer to that, I think, is no, because a haunted house is not accessory or normally subordinate or incidental to the use of farming. Where it gets trickier, and where I can't give you an answer, you know, legal answers are never 100% certain, because I don't know what the facts are. I don't know what the proposed haunted house is, is it a temporary structure, is it a permanent structure? So it's one of those things, I can't give you a definitive answer, because it really is going to depend on the circumstances. But to answer the question of, is a haunted house subordinate or accessory to farming, I think the answer to that is no.
Okay. And then my next question, I think about National Harbor. Every year, they set up a temporary tent, they do ice sculpting, they bring in folks that, you know, it's a pretty nice display, certainly, and it's temporary, it's a part of the code for Prince George's County. But one of the things I was thinking about, I mean, in, in the current amendment, we had, you know, haunted house listed. I mean, is it possible that we're missing things here? I mean, that there's going to be the Winter Wonderland thing on a farm, or whatever? I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm throwing it out there, that, are we being too narrow? We want to think about, I don't know, holiday, whatever? I'm just, you know, that maybe we need to think in a broader sense. I don't know, I'm not the law office, but I just want to make sure that, you know, we're fair on both sides in terms of this is something that we pass, that it's not, you know, just one area, but it could be broader, holiday displays, or whatever. But do you have an opinion on that?
Right, well, I think that is a good point, not necessarily a legal question per se, but I think it is concerning that it's, that it signals out Halloween festivals as opposed to other, other holidays as well. And actually, as you bring up the temporary use issue, I will add also that temporary uses are currently allowed under the code, so it's not inconceivable that something like this could be allowed, if it was in a temporary structure. My understanding is that, that they're looking to do a permanent structure, not a temporary structure, but that, that's a whole separate issue, and that's why the original question you asked is a difficult one to answer, because if, if there was a temporary structure, the answer could be different as well.
Okay, so the structure does make a difference?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that being said, we're going to have the public hearing open up on 2517. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to call off the first six people, and don't get offended if I say your name wrong, it's done with love. So we're going to start with Mr. Mike Shea, if you want to take a seat over here to the right. And it looks like we have Ms. Vicki Holzendorf over here, next to Mr. Shea, Mr. Albert Tucker, and Ms. Kathy Grant, Mr. Paul Christensen, nice seeing you again and talking to you also, and it looks like Mr. Larry Almo, come on down. Fill up six seats over here. It doesn't, I pick a spot, Mr. Shea. Yeah, it's all right. If you want to do the presidential spot, that's fine with me, too.
A little bit easier.
Okay. And let's see, how many more? We got some more people coming down? Let's move in, let's see. I think we have a husband and wife team, so we'll save a seat. All right, so Mr. Dick Lawn, you want to come out? Where's he at? Come on down, Mr. Lawn. Okay, so we're going to start off with a name, address, please keep it to two minutes. And Mr. Shea, take it away, thanks for coming to see us this evening.
Mike Shea from Red Top Farm.
Thank you, Chairman Grasso and the council members. From our farm perspective, as this legislation was written, originally written, I called this bill, in front of you, the aggravation bill. We remember that. And at that very same time, I said the bill as written would put our farm out of business. The administration stepped up, they heard this testimony, they felt the movement, and came forward with nine amendments. And at that time, we had a good bill. We had a good bill that, as John said, we could put a shovel in the ground, we could all move forward. Then a special interest got the 10th amendment, and it was added to benefit one to the dismay of other stakeholders. The good news, though, is it caused the largest diverse coalition ever in South County to come together to ask you to kill this bill. We can wait until we have a clean bill that meets the needs of the citizens and the direct stakeholders in this bill. This coalition includes the small farms, the vineyards, the horse farms, and the environmental community, which I've had a foot in for a long, long time. We are not divided. We ask you to kill this bill. We know what a clean bill looks like. We all want to help the farmers, the horse farms, the vineyards, and our neighbor citizens, but not special interest over public interest, especially when it impacts so many, and as Mr. Pruski says today, a haunted house tomorrow, this tomorrow, that, it's an opening of the tent. And ask yourself, who still wants this bill passed? The supporters have dwindled to one hand. Please vote to kill this bill, this broken bill. New day, new bill. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Shea, appreciate that. Ms. Vicki Holland, Holzendorf, am I saying it right?
Yeah.
All right. Two minutes, please, name and address.
Thank you for allowing me to visit you, this is my third.
Thanks for coming out and seeing us.
Third time testifying in front of the county council on this bill. I'm a small farmer, Red Top Farm in Sheddyside, Maryland. And as Mike outlined, you know, there were some issues with the bill, the county and all the representatives worked really hard, those issues were fixed, everyone was really happy with the bill, and then this 10th amendment, out of the blue at the last minute, got added. I was part of the Agricultural Tourism Advisory Committee for 10 months, and we were brought in as a special meeting, so we all stopped what we were doing, we came in to hear the people from Bennett's Curse, and to give the county our opinion on whether or not this was agritourism. And it was 100% unanimous from the representatives, from the county, farm community, and all the other people who participated, that the number-one principal business is a haunted event. And this is not a small little haunted event, this is Disney quality, according to them, animatronics. This is a, it has been in a commercial zoning up by Blox Park, in a big building, something 20-plus thousand square feet. If you just do the math quick in your head, you know they've got to have a lot of people coming to this on a daily basis. So let's just say it's 100 cars a day, which is probably going to be more than that. It makes the Renaissance Festival look like a wholesome family event, and it's going to be, this is going to be at night. So if this was across the street from my farm, my animals wouldn't be eating, my chickens wouldn't be laying, my cows wouldn't be providing milk, because the daylight hours end at 6 o'clock in October, when they want to run this event. They're going to be allowed to run it until 11 o'clock at night, with noise and commotion and cars and lights, because they're going to have to have parking. I'll never get another egg until sometime in the spring, when the chickens settle down. Please don't support this bill with this amendment.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate you coming out. Mr. Tucker, thanks for coming out.
My name is Albert Tucker, I live at 1270 Lower Pindell Road, I operate the Old Neff Farm. We're a double-century farm, heading to a double-century. And I'm asking you to, to vote against the bill tonight and support the development of a, of a clean bill. I am a Maryland-certified farmer, raising corn, soybeans, and hay on 147 acres, half in crops, half in woodland. The intent of this bill has changed. The original intent was laudable, but in its current form, it fails to recognize the issues that really face county farmers. Its intent was to provide a way to supplement on-farm income and to promote the role of agriculture in Anne Rundle County. Many county farmers still operate family farms as a way of life. The intent of Agri-Tourism's bill was to promote the county's agriculture and its role that it plays in the county's economy. Agriculture contributes $20 million a year, according to the last 2012 Ag Census. The 2017 census will be done this year. However, the addition of a high-density commercial enterprise, especially during peak harvest seasons of August, September, and October, further exacerbates the issues we face. Harvest windows are short, time is of the essence, increased traffic in these periods on narrow, winding roads will greatly, greatly add to these difficulties. Secondly, it subverts farmland preservation. The addition of commercial attractions goes against the intent of farmland preservation. It changes the character of the area, makes farmland preservation harder. Our farms use 28,000 acres, interspersed are many supporting woodlands that are also under active management. Hence, our farmers are the one on the first lines of defense for preserving open space in this county. Our farmers are key to maintaining open space. High-density commercial enterprises do not contribute to this objective. Therefore, I wanted to add, finally, that this has obviously been discussion about the accessory uses, there are a number of issues that should address the traffic and the issues that I've kind of outlined, outlined earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. And Ms. Tucker. Okay. If we can please hold the applause down, and then what we can do after we get through this whole list, then we can all applaud together, okay, if that's fair game. All right, so now the next person we're going to have is Ms. Kathy Grant.
Yep.
Thanks for coming to see us this evening.
Thanks.
You've got your two minutes, go ahead.
My name is Kathy Grant, I live at 404 Arundel Road in Fairhaven, Maryland, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the advocates for Herring Bay. In our view, agritourism could promote a healthy farm economy if it is done right. Unfortunately, the language in Bill 2517 fails to achieve that goal. We urge you to reject it. Our group, along with other community and rural business interests, has spent considerable time and effort trying to help improve this bill, focusing on ways that help support farming, protect the environment, and preserve rural lifestyles. That work needs to continue, with an eye toward legislation that would achieve four key principles. First, eligibility for special treatment should be directly tied to farming. This bill creates incentives for non-farmers to game the rules on accessory uses. Second, zoning uses must have transparent, legally enforceable definitions. Terms like value-added processing are so vague that neither the county nor the federal government can clearly define it. We have been told that zoning officials will simply know it when they see it. If an activity cannot be defined in a court of law, it shouldn't be permitted in every residential district and in environmentally sensitive areas. Third, there should be conditions tailored to the scale, location, and type of activity. We urge you to consider having more than one zoning category for agritourism, because it covers such a wide range of activities. The same holds for value-added processing. The code should distinguish between processing done in a home versus processing done in a new building. Finally, property owners should be accountable for their zoning uses through some kind of licensing regime. Thank you for considering our views.
Thank you so much for coming out, too. Mr. Christensen, nice to see you again, nice talking to you on the phone, too. Thanks for coming out and seeing us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Paul Christensen, I live at 231 Hidden Valley Road in Tracy's Landing. I'm here for the fourth time this evening to say that this bill is very, very broadly written, little attention to detail, has many fatal flaws, not just one. For example, there is vague or no definition of many of the uses, there are conditional uses without conditions, we say we're trying to help farmers, but there's no restriction to bona fide farmers, there's no notice required to the county, do whatever you want, you don't have to tell anybody, there's no clarifying code or guidelines for county zoning officer if he wants to follow up on something. I think the biggest problem is there's no restriction on size, type, or location of these agritourism events. The haunted house amendment, for example, shows us what can happen when loosely-written code is combined with entrepreneurial ambitions of non-farmers. You get large, long-running events with minimal connection to agriculture that are a nightmare for nearby residents. Extending this haunted house-type thinking to an extreme brings us to an absurd conclusion that an entrepreneur might suggest to put a three-ring circus on a piece of agricultural land and call it agritourism because it has horse land and call it agritourism, because it has horses in one of the acts. It just doesn't make sense. So, some people are saying we could pass this bill and amend it later and take care of the problems. But this bill will need a truckload of Band-Aid amendments to be fixed. Let's just start over. Let's kill this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming out. Mr. Larry Almo, is it? Am I saying it right?
Yes, sir.
Hey, with the moose around, right?
Said it right. My name is Larry Almo, and I'm representing our five-acre family farm in General's Highway in Indianapolis, and we're zoned in an RLD area. My family strongly supports this bill. I feel like the odd man out at this table, and maybe in this whole room. But we see the benefit of this bill, supporting us and a lot of other farmers. I keep on hearing about this is a bad bill, and we ought to kill it now and start all over again. Well, we've been playing with this bill since April. We people keep on coming in, and what if we get to death? Okay? This will happen, this will happen, the other thing will happen, and it's never going to get done. If we kill this bill and start from scratch, the same opponents, okay, who have been advocating, "Kill it, and let's do something different," are the same ones who'll come in and take and procrastinate the whole bill, the replacement bill, and it'll never, ever, ever get done. We believe the passage of this bill will provide the needed changes to enable the opportunities for primary farmers such as us to grow and get and open up new opportunities for us and increase our revenue. Contrary to what has been stated today, we cannot wait. We need this bill now, okay? And we request the council to approve this bill and stop letting the "what-ifs" dominate this forum. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming out. Okay, Mr. Dick Lawn, is it?
Yes.
How you doing today, sir? Thanks for coming out and seeing us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Dick Lawn. I'm the director of the Chesapeake Bay String of Pearls Project.
Got to give me an address, too, to go along with all that, okay? Name and address, if you don't mind.
I live at 1488 Harwell Avenue, Crofton, Maryland. I speak as a voice to preserve land in the Chesapeake Bay watershed in all six states and the district. In September, we're designating pearls of seven farms down in South County and all of the Jug Bay public properties down there to be pearls. These are special, special places. And I think all of us that have a vision of Anarundel County and know what keep South County rural means, knows what preserving farmland means, and how important it is to this vision. I worry about the slippery slope, what's gonna happen to these special places, to preserving lordland down there. A Renaissance Festival wasn't appropriate. My question is, preserve South County. Thank you. And farmlands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawn. Okay, appreciate you folks all coming down. We're gonna get up our next group of people. So let's see, we're gonna have Mr. Jill Bennett, and looks like Mr. Alan Bennett, and Nora Terrace, if I'm saying it right, and John Faber. We have Ms. Pam Bush. And let's see, looks like Ms. Kathy Fleishman. I might be on a roll tonight, 10 for 10, or 12 for 12, whatever the number is right at this point. Okay, so we're gonna start off with Ms. Bennett. Name, address, please, and your two minutes.
Sure. My name is Jill Bennett. My address is 1610 Bridewells Court, Joppa, Maryland, 21085. My husband Alan and I started Bennett's Curse 17 years ago. We operated 14 years here in Anarundel County. Our goal is to continue to operate our seasonal Halloween event a few weeks out of the year, which amounts to about 120 hours of operation. We've operated, as I said, for 17 years. We are professionals. We have done this for a very long time, and we believe that this is something that, of course, Anarundel County has been asking us for. We're not just fighting for our existence as a business, but also to help preserve farmland and the experience we can offer the people of Maryland. For years, our customers have asked us to diversify and give them what Pennsylvania and other states around us have already implemented: haunted hayrides, haunted mazes, haunted trails, in addition to operating our haunted house. We want to be involved with the farming community as we see it as an opportunity to help preserve farmland from development. We've been kicked off the last three locations by developers. Two of those locations were prior farms. One in Anarundel County was over 400 acres. We're tired of seeing farms being redeveloped into residential plan unit developments. I've learned what that is after I got kicked off our farm. Sorry. We've been, our goal is to give the people of Maryland what they're asking for, to give them a high-quality Halloween agritourism event that they're leaving the state to visit. Pennsylvania has been doing these types of attractions on farm property for years, and that's helped in preserving their farm property. We bring many jobs to our local American citizens. We pay taxes, and we bring tourism to an area in the community. Hayrides and corn mazes are already occurring, so our question is to, why, when we call it haunted, is it not allowed? Some say they don't consider haunted hayrides or haunted corn mazes or haunted houses agritourism. And when we asked why they don't consider that, the farm folks told us, because it's competition to them, and if it's a low-budget Halloween, it would be okay. So I just wanted to say that, you know, we hope that you guys give us our vote in bringing this back to Anarundel County. It's something that the state of Maryland really needs, and I know it's gonna be a positive impact on the whole county and state. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bennett? Name and address, two minutes.
Alan Bennett, 1610 Bridewells Court, Joppa, Maryland. I just-
Hold on, don't lose it. There you go.
You know, Jill kinda elaborated on a lot of the things I was gonna, to talk about. But, you know, Winston Churchill said it best, "A fervent minority will displace a complacent majority." We understand that a handful of farmers, really what appears to me is a good old boy network, is trying to protect their assets and trying to, they're allowed to do what they want to do, but then, once they're able to do what they want to do, they want to close the door on us. As American citizens, we feel we deserve the right to exist. We deserve the right to open our business, and the people in the county deserve a right to be entertained. I could do a show of hands now, the people who are against this bill, have they ever been to our attraction? I can almost assure you that all of them are no. But you can look at agritourism, and you could really just, I mean, we could fit into agritourism just as easily as a horse farm, or a vineyard, or there's pillow jumps, and there's pedal cars, and all these other things. But unfortunately, these folks have, you know, been able to somehow do what they wish, and they want to close the door to other people. Anarundel County is our home place for our business. We love the county. I have deep roots in the county. The county wants us. I can galvanize the public opinion to prove this, if that's essential to this process. But in Pennsylvania and all the other states around, exactly what we want to do is already allowed as agretainment and agritourism. But Maryland, for some reason, we fall behind in almost every aspect of this. We were behind in casinos. To other states, we're losing in that. We did something about it. We're losing in this as well. And it's time that we stop losing, and we give the people, a young couple, a young family who wants to come in and do farming, and we want to exist, and we ask for your support, and we thank you for your time today.
Mr. Chairman. Thanks, sir. Mr. Pruski.
Mr. Bennett, thank you. You and I had a conversation on the phone. Thank you for reaching out.
Oh, thank you so much.
But I did want to follow up, because, you know, I think it's clear, you know, that people are both sides. They really don't either understand the issue or need more information. In regards to the roads, though, that's the big thing that I keep hearing. I mean, are you opposed to additional restrictions and understand why a collector road might be used, and maybe you need a main and arterial, number one? And number two, are you looking for a permanent or temporary structure, or you don't know? I'm just curious, you know, with folks.
Sure. Well, I mean, if I can just, if I can just quickly answer, it seems a lot of the information that people are going by is completely false. The numbers that they're giving are completely false. The traffic count, completely false. Everything's being overestimated. We're mainly, we're just looking for an opportunity to exist in the county. We want to come back to the county. We existed for 14 years. However that would work, we want to work within the framework of this bill. Okay? We're not coming to start an adversarial role with anybody. We're a very community-based business. So whatever roads works for us, we would want to go to, but the problem is availability and affordability. So we've been searching for a while, but this is the county we want to be, and we're not, I mean, we're open to discussing anything, as long as we're able to find some solution that, I would love to make everyone happy, but, you know, that's certainly not possible. But we want to, you know, work within the framework, and whatever we can, as a group, all of us decide what's best. But we want to exist. We need to exist. It's what we do for a living. I have a growing family, as you can see with my wife, and it's, you know, it's a dream come true. It's an absolute dream for me to do this.
Okay, just a follow-up. Did the Anarundel Economic Development Corporation reach out to you at all about appropriate spots?
We've been working with Wes McGillam for a couple of years, but the problem is, we're being mainly pushed to commercial spaces, and those commercial spaces, they won't lease to us. A lot of them aren't even local. A lot of them are, you know, conglomerates, basically groups of people from other California, Texas, that own these properties. And as soon as they say haunted house, we face a considerable amount of discrimination because of what we do. And so that's already an uphill battle. But we've worked with Wes for years, but, you know, everything pretty much pushes us towards commercial, which obviously is unaffordable, and also, it's not. Yeah, what we want to do, what people are asking us in the county, is they want us to do hayrides. They want us to do corn mazes. They want us to do these outdoor activities. It seems like everyone's throwing around haunted houses as a scare tactic, like that's all we do. That's what we do now. The whole purpose of moving and buying a farm is to farm it. And we want that farm aesthetic. We want to operate as a farm. That's what people want us to do. That's what they're leaving Maryland for. They're going out of state. They're taking our economy with them, and they're not bringing that money back. We want to hire local people. We want to work within this state and benefit the state, pay taxes in the state.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, next person, Ms. Nora Terrace, is I'm saying it right?
Yes.
Thanks for coming out tonight. Name and address, please.
You just talk, and it turns it on, I see. I'm Nora Terrace, and I live at 727 Shiloh Court in Davidsonville, Maryland, 21035. And I agree a lot with a lot of what earlier people have said. However, my focus, I'm not a farmer. I'm a resident. I have been involved in the nonprofit community and was opposed to the Renaissance Festival on behalf of Jug Bay, friends of Jug Bay in the past. But it just, I mean, I see the claims that the numbers are not going to be as great as we see that they might be. We don't know at this point, and I don't think, I think that we need to take a step back and just reconsider this and look at it. It doesn't need to be rushed through. The roads in South County where I live are not equipped to handle large amounts of traffic. We went through that issue with the Renaissance Festival, and this could very well be a big problem with this, too. I don't object to Mr. Bennett being, given the opportunity to explain that and try to explain why it's not gonna be the case. And once people have had a chance to consider it, it's possible to change our minds. But at this point, it just seems to me that it's being rushed through. As you know, it just came out in the paper, and people in the county are just becoming aware that this is proposed. And I don't really feel comfortable with the argument that, oh, you can always, you can fix it later. There's, I just don't see what the rush is, if it's something that could really hurt the quality of life of residents in South County, hurt businesses in South County. Of course, it would help restaurants and gas stations, but most other businesses in South County, we'd have, struggle because their regular customers would have to face traffic to get to them. And I just, I just don't see the rush and think that we need to take a step back. And thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out, ma'am. Appreciate that. Mr. Faber? Thanks for coming to see us tonight. Two minutes and address, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is John Faber. Live at 4570 Owensville-Sudley Road, Harwood, Maryland, 20776. And I'm president of the Anarundel County Farm Bureau. And I'd like to thank the chairman, Chairman Grosso, and the county council members for your time this evening. I'm here tonight to express Anarundel County Farm Bureau's opposition to Bill 2517 as is currently written. I'm not gonna go into too many details. I'm sure others will, and I want to be brief, because I have cows and sheep at home that need to be fed. The agritourism bill needs to stay agriculture. The Farm Bureau Board of Directors has reached out to members and neighbors in the community, and they overwhelmingly feel the same way. This bill, as amended, will negatively impact farmers hosting agritourism-type events on their rural properties. I urge the county council to vote against this bill as amended. The farming and rural communities do need a bill to address agritourism in the county. Farm Bureau is ready to assist in any way possible to bring other bill, to bring another bill before the council and address agritourism, as well as any other issues involving residential and rural land use. I look forward to working with the council and community to bring such a bill forward. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we have Ms. Pam Bush, is it?
Yep.
Thanks for coming out, ma'am. Name and address, please, and two minutes.
I'm Pam Bush. I live at 735 Bayard Road, Logan. I'm here to ask the council to vote against Bill 2517. I spent a large part of my 40-year career working with landowners to conserve open space and agricultural land, and I understand farmers' needs for supplemental income stream. However, as originally drafted and certainly as amended, this bill does not include the set of specific standards necessary to ensure that agriculture and farming remains the primary activity. Without these standards, the result could be that farming becomes the accessory activity with agritourism the primary focus. If that occurs, a likely result could be the over-commercialization of our rural agricultural areas and the diminution of actual farming, something that nobody here wants to see, whether we are opposed to or for the bill, I'm sure. I have previously provided detailed comments and recommendations for improvement to the bill, to, in emails to the council members. I've spoken to Mr. Walker, who represents my district, and I've communicated my concerns to both Mr. Marzick and Mr. Schu, so I won't go into them now again tonight. In my opinion and my experience, I was part of the team that developed the state's award-winning Rural Legacy Program. It would not be complicated, not be a complicated process to create a set of conditions for agritourism activities which could facilitate these ancillary activities without threatening what everybody is trying to protect, continued farming in Anarundel County. So I ask you to kill this bill and get everybody together and work to develop a bill that meets the needs of this community and our farming community. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming out. Okay, let's see, we're at Ms. Kathy Fleishman. Thank you, ma'am, for coming down and seeing us.
My name is Kathy Fleishman. I live at 1280 Myers Station Road, Odington, Maryland. I am here in opposition to this bill and the amendment as written. I was raised in farmland, and I know how important it is. But from what I'm hearing tonight, there are a lot of concerns that have not been addressed yet. And for me, in my particular situation, I live on a rural road, and we have a new housing development that's being presently built, and we're already having problems with traffic getting in and out. I can't imagine what it would be like if we have something else coming in, as it's been mentioned here. I'm certainly hoping that our council will take in consideration noise control, hours of operation, and I feel that there's still a lot to be discussed before this bill is passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming out and seeing us, too. Mr. Walker?
Thank you. Mr. Bennett, just real quickly, I think the numbers for the Renaissance Festival, as been mentioned a couple of times, I want to say the attendance is somewhere in the 300 to 350,000 people a year. On your best year, would it be safe to say that you were less than a tenth of that?
As it, as our best, if it took our best year, the Renaissance Festival would be about 20 times bigger than us.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I mean, that's, the comparison with the Renaissance Festival has just been, I mean, it's 20 cars to one. And if I could just say one last thing.
Sure.
You know, this industry is growing, what we do. It's growing, you know, if anybody who's, you know, followed would be able to see. If it's a concern to people that they don't want to see more of these popping up, I think it would behoove them to work with the one group that wants to do it, because if we come, I can all but assure you we will not have other people coming to the county because we're, you know, they just won't come to the county. They will be scared off by coming to the county. Without us there, it's going to be a vacuum, and other people are going to come in, and we're going to be having this meeting again next year and the year after that. It just won't be us, it'll be other people. So, you know, I think with what we are, us coming would be, would protect the county from a bunch of others popping up. They're not going to come to compete against us.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Sure.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All right. Thank you, folks. Appreciate you all coming down. Okay. We're going to call up our next group. Start off with Ms. Catherine Fox. Come on down. It looks like Ms. Mila Walsh. Come on down. And if there's anybody else additional that wants to speak on Bill 2517, we have a couple Okay. So we'll start off with Ms. Fox. Thank you for coming out and seeing us this evening. Two minutes, please, and a name and address.
My name is Kate Fox. I live at 3495 Olympia Road in Davidsonville. I come tonight representing Davidsonville Area Civic Association. We call ourselves DACA. DACA is in opposition to this bill. They were in support of the bill until the most recent amendment was added to it. At this point, they felt that it was not an appropriate use for, in Davidsonville or in the rest of the county. Davidsonville is a rural suburban area. We have residential communities. We have working farms. We have some small businesses, and we have one well-known major business in Davidsonville. Large Halloween venues, like the one proposed in this bill, do not meet any of the definitions in the bill of agriculture, farming, or agritourism. You've heard from other farmers who have pumpkin, who are concerned about how it would affect farming. This could even affect farmers who have pumpkin patches and corn mazes that are just small attractions. We've been going to one for years with my kids and have enjoyed it very much. And I'm concerned that allowing these larger venues could hurt them as well. The other thing is, people mention that, well, let's pass the bill and then fix it. In passing the bill, you could open up loopholes that can be exploited before the next bill can be passed. It seems to me that this bill has been going along for about two months now. So please, do not pass this bill. Get a new bill that meets the needs of farmers and not large Halloween venues. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming down. Okay. We have Ms. Mila Walsh, is it?
Good evening.
Thank you.
It's Millie Welch.
Millie Welch, thank you.
My address is 3355 Davidsonville Road, Davidsonville. I'm a farmer. I am vice president of the County Farm Bureau. I am chair of the Anarondale County Soil Conservation District. I'm definitely not a good old boy, and I'm very much in favor of this bill as it has been amended. I was here a couple of weeks ago and spoke to the council in favor of the bill, and now I am opposed to it. I think we definitely need a form of legislation for agritourism, but I don't think this bill is it, and I believe that bad legislation is worse than no legislation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. I appreciate it. Okay. Sir, we'll go off to you. Your name and address for the record, please, in two minutes.
Stuart Pittman, 440 Doden Road, Davidsonville, Maryland. Doden Farm, I operate. So I make my living farming. I'm also here representing both Soil Conservation District with Millie and Farm Bureau, where I'm the chair of the County Issues Committee. And you all have read my emails, all the reasons why we first opposed the bill, then we supported the bill with the amendments, and worked with the Schu administration to be able to get those amendments through. Had a great collaboration there. And then, and then this amendment was introduced at the last meeting. It shocked us all. None of us saw it in advance. None of you saw it in advance, I don't believe. And I think some people might have even been confused about what they were voting on, and there was some information that was provided suggesting that this was more to protect people from Bennett's Curse than it was to allow Bennett's Curse or any other haunted house operation that claims to be the biggest in the Mid-Atlantic region. So we've got Farm Bureau with 620 farm members and 3,844 associate members. We've got 18 civic organizations that have signed on to oppose this the way it stands. And for farmers in this county, you know, we have small farms, and we're in areas where there are people who live as well. It's not like out in Iowa where you got 10 miles down the road before you got another house. So what we do on our farms really does impact our communities. And as farmers, we're like business people, and we want to, we want to work with our neighbors. So we want to keep the water clean, and we don't want to be a nuisance. And when you start looking at agritourism and thinking that instead of related agriculture accessory uses are allowed, and you start saying, well, it's just any secondary use you want, whether it's a haunted house, a movie theater, or any other kind of attraction, you start, you start opening the door to folks coming from out of the county who want to make money, who want to not have to pay the amusement tax. I mean, that's a big reason why they don't want to be in a commercial area, and they don't want to, they want to go through this amusement. They want to not have to pay the amusement tax. So that, I mean, that goes with the agritourism bill. No amusement tax. So we strongly urge you to not pass bad legislation in the hope that you can fix it later. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you. Ms. Johnson, we'll go ahead and do you next. Even though we know your name and address by heart, go ahead and give it through the record, too, please.
I'd like to thank all of these rural folks for coming in and standing up for their rights. The caliber of testimony is so, so high. Clearly organized, articulate, you know, just well-prepared and well-thought-out. And I think it's really important that we invite these people to keep on coming and keep on coming back, because we need your wisdom and your experience. But I am appalled that any politician would present a piece of legislation and say, vote for this. You can trust me that I'm going to come back and I'm going to make the next bill just exactly what you've always dreamed of having. Who would think that any one of you would be dumb enough to buy that? Because I think there are at least a couple out here who don't believe that. But then again, you can always fool some of the people. I support the importance of redoing this, because this Tenth Amendment is just ghastly. There's something else that's important. Oh, I remember what it was. You know, the people in South County really care about one another, and they talk about caring about one another. And, you know, the farmer who said, well, my livestock are really going to be upset with whatever increase of traffic there may be. And of course, the Bennetts don't want their business to grow to be any larger. So, you know, they'll keep it small as it is. But, you know...
Please summarize, Ms. Johnson.
It appears to me that the Bennetts have stated the worst case for themselves. They don't care about the farmers across the road, down the road, or down a couple, you know, farther on down, a couple. So thank you. And please oppose this bill.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, always. Ms. Potter, two minutes, name and address, please. Thanks for coming out and seeing us. Ms. Fleckston, sorry about that. I got you and Ms. Potter all mixed up. Sorry about that. You both stand for good causes.
Okay. It's going to come on. Okay. I'm Ann Fleckston, and I'm the executive director. Despite what the paper says, that I'm the president of Growth Action, I'm not. I'm the executive director. And I've written, I think, to most of you on the council, and I, we sent a letter to County Executive Schu, and I wanted to pass that out to you because it has the names of all the organizations, from Jessup Improvement Association to Paristal to Greater Southern Park Council. It's all over the county, and I think we have to remember that Mr. Bennett said, if he comes in, he'll be it, and there'll be no other haunted houses. We're not against the kind of traditional haunted house that you probably are familiar with, where the firemen put it on. I read in the paper, and I think they were quoting the Bennetts, that it would be 24 nights, 24 nights a season. And I think that's quite a bit. I'd like to also address this issue of grandfathering, which I'm concerned about. If this bill is passed tonight, the bill will go into effect on August 17. The earliest a new bill could come to us, come to you, would be coming next in two weeks. There won't be a hearing in two weeks. And then you've got to wait until September. So by the September, these folks are grandfathered, at least arguably grandfathered, and I've seen with landfill cases, there are two still pending in court. If you fool around with grandfathering when you don't really have all the facts you need, and I think the Bennetts have pretty much confirmed this will be a big operation, and it doesn't have anything to do with agriculture, even if they plant corn. And I think it's a killer amendment that should be killed. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Ma'am, I should note your name, because you're getting to be a regular down here, too. Name and address, too. Two minutes, please.
Lisa Bender, 712 Shore Road, Southern Park, Maryland. I'm here to, I'm here to kind of echo what some of the other people have said. Unfortunately, this bill no longer appears to be geared to helping the county's agricultural properties, as mentioned by the previous, some of the previous testimony. This may only be the start of commercial businesses opening up in the county. The recent amendments seem to be proposed to allow purely commercial businesses to open in Anarondale County in both rural and residential areas. The amendments appear to be in response to special interests. It does not necessarily relate to farming or agriculture, and it could open up the entire county to possible abuse of commercial businesses, opening up not only an RA and RLD, but also an R1, which is residential. The business, a business such as Bennett's Curse is not appropriate. It could open up a Pandora's Box. This bill allows for too many gray areas, and parts of the original bill allowed for reduced zoning and building code requirements. It seems more appropriate to start a new bill than approve this flawed bill with a future promise to fix problems later. That's all.
All right. Thanks, Ms. Bender. Appreciate you coming out.
Happy Independence Day.
Same to you. Thank you. Mr. Peruka.
Just, thank you. Just a quick question before this panel leaves. Maybe, and Mr. Pittman, perhaps you could answer this, or maybe here's Welsh. I'm just, I'm just curious. Something that was so good, we were for it, and now because of, I'm assuming because of no restrictions, but that's what I really want to ask. What is the reason specifically that took this from being so good to being unacceptable?
The definition of agritourism in the original bill has uses that have to do with agriculture. And as soon as you put in Halloween festivals and attractions, it took it away from agriculture. It opened, it said it doesn't have to be agricultural. Halloween, there are mazes, and we have great harvest festival-type operations that are on farms that are agritourism. And there's the corn, you know, the hayride, and the corn maze, and the pumpkin patch, and all of that. And that's been, that's been allowed in this county under the current zoning guidelines, and it's part of agritourism now. But as soon as they put in something that was Halloween, it's like saying, whether it's New Year's or any other kind of an event that's not anything to do with agriculture, that's where, we couldn't take that anymore.
So the, there's a definition change, is...
Yeah. Halloween was added.
But what about this problem about size, restrictions on size? Was that, was that a problem earlier, or is that not a problem at all?
Well, our understanding, and when we talked at the last meeting, the administration said that they wanted to get this bill passed, and they were going to set up a checklist so that if you had an agritourism activity, there would be some assessment that is done by plan and zoning. Those are areas of the bill that, you know, that may or may not get worked on and changed. As farmers, we don't want large-scale, we don't want large-scale entertainment things going on. We want it to be on the farm, and we don't want it to interfere with our neighbors.
Got it. But that's, and that's where I want to hone in, but there was no restriction on the size in the other bill that you were, that you were very much in favor of?
There have not been ceilings, no, on any of the bills.
Right. But, okay, so the...
And we were taking...
So that's not a change?
That's not a change, no, no. I mean, we all know that if you have a haunted house operation that wants to come in, and they claim to be the biggest in the Mid-Atlantic, size quickly becomes an issue. But it doesn't take much imagination to know that, that any, we don't want very large non-agricultural operations going on.
Ms. Welsh, I mentioned your name. Did you want to, do you have anything to add or to track from that?
Well, I think, how do I make it work? I think our concern is that we want to see agritourism be something that promotes what is already happening on the farm, not something, not have the agricultural part be a secondary use to the commercial part. It's, I think it's a matter of having, which is coming first, the cart or the horse. We want the horse first, because we want the agriculture to be the important part, and then any, any secondary benefit that can be gained from agritourism to be a result of the agriculture. So for instance, if we had a beekeeper who wanted to have honey candy, that would, that would be following. But to have somebody selling and making chocolate candy, as far as I know, we don't grow any chocolate trees in Anarondale County. So we want it to be something that's directly connected to the, to the commodity or the crop or the animal that's on the farm. I kept thinking I could be facetious and say, maybe I could open a haunted house by digging up a couple of dead cows and horses, but that is even really funny. But I don't see a connection between a haunted house and agriculture for the life of me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Let me just throw something in there real quick. Pumpkins. Farms grow pumpkins, right? And don't they use pumpkins for jack-o'-lanterns and that kind of stuff? And if there was a haunted house, and they decorated the haunted house with pumpkins and candles and all that kind of stuff, and they were to take the pumpkins and set them out in front of the haunted house and say, hey, we're selling pumpkins, two for a dollar, and then the kids could go home and actually carve out their own little pumpkins? I mean, it's similar to like Thanksgiving, right? Where you have corn, and scarecrows, and pumpkin pie, and all that stuff. So isn't that an indirect way of...
Pumpkins and, pumpkins and corn are an agricultural product. And one of the scary things about this amendment to me is that, and I hope this would not happen, but if this amendment passes, it not only allows the Halloween stuff, but then it puts condition on the Halloween stuff. So down, down the road, we got a guy on the corner of Central Avenue and 424 that has a pumpkin patch, and it's very much agritourism. You go in there, and the kids play on there. They get to pat the goats, and they play on the, on the tractors. And you could argue that that's Halloween, because like you say, it's pumpkins, and there's a big round bale with a spider, and it's kind of scary. So maybe that's Halloween. Well, if that becomes Halloween, then he has to comply with these conditions. And one of the conditions is that it can't be visible from the road. That's impossible for him. That would shut him down. So it's poorly constructed. It has effects that were never intended, and just got to go.
Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Fink.
Mr. Pittman, I obviously know the answer to this question, sitting here for the last hour, but if, if this bill had, as introduced, amendments one through nine, you would still be supporting it, right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And knowing that there is a, there's a will to come back at the next meeting and pull out Halloween, you still don't support this bill?
Not this bill, no.
Okay. Okay. And is that, I mean, you just don't feel like that bill's going to come forward? You don't think there's four votes to pass that bill? You just don't know if there's four votes to pass that bill?
I've heard it said that this body is unpredictable.
This body's a lot of different things.
I've heard the same thing, Mr. Pittman. I've heard the exact same thing.
The record is clear. Yeah. That's a diplomatic way of putting it, I think.
But we, but we do get the sense that you guys all support agritourism, and that we can come back with a good bill and get you to pass it, and we're going to try.
Okay. October 1, 2017, this bill passes tonight. October 1, 2017, this bill passes tonight. We come back next meeting, introduce a bill. Beginning of September, we pass that bill, pulls out Halloween. You're happy October 1, right?
No.
We've got a window.
I'll be happier October 1 than we are right now if you pass this thing.
This bill passes, the next bill passes that removes Halloween in early September. Now we're at October 1. There's no Halloween, and you have your agritourism.
Well, it depends on whether these guys have been grandfathered in, for one, and we don't, none of us can say that. It depends on whether anybody shut down the guy on the corner of...
How would they be grandfathered in? What's the thought there?
Well, it's perfectly legal right now. I mean, they can argue that because Halloween activities are included in agritourism, they can go ahead, and they can set up shop on a farm.
So...
And then, and then, once they've invested their money, they go to court, and they say, well, we invested this money when it was legal. You can't just turn around and make it illegal after we've invested all that money. We're grandfathered in forever.
Okay, okay. So the thought would be that they're open September 1?
They could probably go to court and say, we built, you know, we put all this money into creating all the attractions, and we built this stuff when it was legal, and now you're going to bankrupt us if, you know, if we're not grandfathered in. And then the courts can argue about it.
But we change law all the time, zoning laws, and I mean, that's, that happens all the time.
But when you change a zoning law, can you shut down a business after you change the law that's been there for 20 years? I don't think so.
Nonconforming use, you're right. Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right. With that being said, I thank you folks coming down here. We've hit everybody on the printed sheet. Anybody else wants to speak on 2517, come on down. Forever hold your peace. Seeing no movement in the crowd. We're going to close the public hearing on 2517. Okay, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2517 as amended.
Bill Number 2517, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning and Construction and Property Maintenance Code Supplement, Construction Code Administrative Provisions, Agritourism, Permits, Agricultural Buildings.
All right. Any discussion, members of council?
Ms. Chair.
Ms. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just before we take the vote, I wanted to explain my upcoming vote. Like several of the panelists, I was originally opposed to the bill as introduced. Then we did a bunch of amendments. I supported the bill, and then the final amendment, you know, now is causing some concern. So I'm going to be, I voted against that amendment, and I'm going to be voting against the bill. One of my considerations is several times recently, we've run up against the expiration date of a bill, and there's been a problem. And sometimes the solution is, well, let's just pass what we have, and then we'll fix it. And, you know, at various times, I've heard even the administration argue against that point. Today, they're arguing for that point. And, you know, I understand their reasoning. But the community that this is supposed to help, you know, the farming community in general, those are the ones that have come tonight and told us not to support this bill. And the issue of the Halloween amusements, I think, is an issue that deserves some more scrutiny. I have nothing against Bennett's Curse or any Halloween amusement. I think that they have the potential to, you know, bring something to the county, but I think that should be a separate issue that we should consider and debate, and not have it kind of tacked on to the last minute to this bill, which so much work went into to benefit the agricultural community. So I just wanted to explain my vote in opposition, and I hope that my colleagues will join me. Thank you.
Okay. With that being said...
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peruca.
Thank you very much. I know we're facing a late night, but I really want to ask the administration if they would respond to this, to the dialogue we just had with Mr. Pittman regarding the definitional issue. Would they be willing to do that? Because it seems, it seems to me it's, there's no, there's, the latest amendment made no change with respect to the, the, the no restrictions on size, so that doesn't seem to have been the thing. It has to do with whether or not this Halloween word, or the latest amendment itself, has made the change that, I want to make sure that that change that they're complaining about is the change that's made. Or do you have, or is, do you have a different view?
Mr. Peruca, I'm going to again defer to Ms. Kenny on this, but I just want to make sure I'm answering your question correctly. Is your question whether or not the proposed use that's being discussed is agritourism?
Basically, my question is this. Is Mr. Pittman's, excuse me for pointing you out, sir, but you made the argument, is it valid? Is, do you have an answer, would you have an answer for his argument? That's really where I'm, and I was trying, I was trying my best to hone what that argument is, and, but that's what I'm really asking.
Okay, well, he made several arguments, so I'm trying to figure out which one you're...
Well, it has to do with the definition of Halloween expanding this deal to something that it wasn't before. I think, I think that's essentially what he was saying.
I would argue that the definition of agritourism, from the last hearing to when the bill was amended, was changed by adding in the including the Halloween.
Right.
That definition still includes the specifics of what has to happen in order for something to be agritourism. And that definition says that it has to be an accessory use to agriculture. So I would say that, I'm not sure if that's answering your question.
Well, yeah, what I'm trying to determine is, has that, can, would it be the policy to still deny the kind of activity that we've been discussing here tonight, even in the face of the amendment? The way the bill stands now, would it still be denied for the same reasons it would be denied before, because it's not an accessory use, regardless of the use of the word Halloween?
Denied from, being exempt from permits?
No, no, denied, denied from, from being an agriculture, from the benefit of the agritourism bill.
Well, that's, one of the benefits is to be exempt from the permits. And I would think that, as Ms. Kenny said earlier, and again, I'll defer to her, but it's really going to matter what the "it" is in that discussion. I think that you end up having, you know, a giant warehouse built to occupy activity like this. I would think that's pretty clearly not agritourism, as it's going to be the primary purpose of that piece of land. If you have, you know, a farm that, you know, grows corn and creates a corn maze, and, you know, sells strawberry jam out of the barn, that, in my mind, would be an accessory use to the agricultural purpose of the land. Maybe, do I have more?
Well, I may be able to add a little bit to that. Kelly Kenny, Senior Assistant County Attorney. And I will elaborate on what I said before. I think it's hard to answer that question, not knowing exactly what the "it" is, as Bernie just said. As I said earlier, a haunted house built in a large structure is not something that would be considered agritourism, because it's not accessory to farming. But then, some of the other examples that were given tonight, they very well could be considered to be accessory to farming. So it really depends on what the "it" is, or what the proposed use is, to say that it would or would not be allowable under this bill. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It's just so difficult to answer, because there's so many possible scenarios that could come up. The one Mr. Grasso gave, where, you know, if there's pumpkins involved, you know, then is it accessory to farming?
These folks are claiming that a change was made that ruins this thing. And I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to understand what that was. And what I hear the administration saying is, this kind of activity that you're concerned about still wouldn't happen, because it's still not an accessory use. But still, so your argument is that they're exaggerating something that wouldn't, that is, that's not called for?
Well, I don't know if I would go that far. I mean, I think the amendment to the bill has opened the door to additional uses that were not envisioned under the first, or the last version of the bill, with the addition of the Halloween festivals or attractions, that phrase is not defined. It could be interpreted a myriad of different ways. So it is very open-ended as to what that entails. What is a Halloween festival or attraction? Is it just a corn maze? Or is it a haunted house? You know, so it really does open up some of those questions that weren't there before.
And quickly, do you have an answer to his stopple argument, his worry that it would be, that it could be grandfathered in, because there would be money spent, even if they wouldn't be approved, they could spend some money and, and I'm not, please excuse me, I'm not directing my comments to Mr. Mrs. Bennett. That's not, but could an activity spend money and thereby claim that there's a stopple, and they can't be, they can't be denied now?
Sure, there could be the possibility that they could get a nonconforming use recognition or grandfathered use recognition. The timeframes were talked about a little bit. There would be, if the timeframes happened as if we're discussing it tonight, where the bill passed tonight, and it was enacted, I heard somebody say it would be effective August 8th, say. And then, so starting August 8th, that use would be allowed.
Right.
And then, if the next bill came to disallow that use, and that didn't become effective until October 1st, then if that use, nonconforming use is defined as something that comes into being at a time when it's allowed by the code. So if that use came into being during that timeframe, before the new bill became effective, then they could theoretically apply for a nonconforming use recognition.
Got it.
And get that. Now, as far as them, if the use wasn't initiated, and they spent money on that, that would be a vested rights issue, and sometimes it depends on how much, how much effort and time and money that they put into that.
Okay. Listen, thank you very, very much, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and my colleagues, for stretching us out a little bit. I know it's, I know it's going to be late, so thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else? With that being said, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 2517 as amended.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
No.
Mr. Peruca.
Nay.
Mr. Trumbauer.
No.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Bill 2517 is defeated.
With that being said, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2817 as amended.
Bill Number 2817 is amended, an ordinance concerning finance, taxation, and budget, admission, and amusement tax agritourism.
We all know it's a dovetail to the other bill.
Yeah, I would suggest that you make a motion to hold this bill.
Folks, everyone who please want to keep it down a little bit, we have recording equipment going on, and the deal's still going on.
Ms. Chair.
Ms. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'll wait a second for Mr. Marzick. Mr. Marzick, I think you were telling us to hold the bill.
I would recommend that, yes. Two definitions with the bill.
Right. What's the expiration date?
July 1st.
Yeah, it will die.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, well...
It's tied to the other one.
Is there any reason why we couldn't hold it? I mean, do we have to vote it, Miss Tate?
Yes. I mean, you have to do something.
Yeah, we can hold it.
You can hold it.
There's no, you can hold it to expire, or you can just vote it down, because it was tied to what this other bill...
So I guess I still have the floor. I mean, is there a reason that you, is there a reason why we shouldn't just defeat it, knowing that it's not because of the merits of this bill, but because of its companion?
I, no, I mean, the bill, the bill doesn't have the definition in it. That's the problem. It's tied to the other bill.
Understood. I mean, we know the bill isn't going to pass. We're just arguing about what's the proper procedure, but our council is telling us her preference is not to hold it, so...
It's not my preference. It's with the rules.
With the rules. All right, well, let's just, let's just vote it. That's fine by me.
Okay. With that being said...
I mean, we can, we can vote it, knowing that we're not, that we're, you're going to vote for it.
What if it passes?
You want to pass it?
No, I'd say, what if it does pass?
I don't know.
You're going to get four votes for it.
It's contingent on the passage of Bill 2517, so even if it were to pass, it wouldn't be effective, because it's contingent on 2517 passing as well.
Got it. Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, we have Ms. Tate chiming in.
It doesn't matter. Ms. Kenny already answered.
Okay.
Okay.
The microphone works.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2817 as amended.
I read the title. We can now vote.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 2817 as amended.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Why are you all voting for a dead bill?
Because they just want to be difficult, Mr. Trumbauer. Go ahead.
Mr. Trumbauer.
No!
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
What is the, I don't understand why you guys did that.
Five in the affirmative...
They're having fun. They're throwing the football around.
Two in the negative. Bill 2817 is passed.
Okay.
I've finally reached the moment on the council where I have no idea what's going on. It took me six and a half years to get here.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 3417 as amended. This ought to be a kicker.
Bill Number 3417 as amended, an ordinance concerning licenses towing companies, police-initiated tow.
So we're back to the, back to the continuing saga. So the last, the last time that we talked, well, we're going to let the administration say what they want to say, and then we'll move forward on to Amendment Number Two that was held. So do you folks want to chime in and say anything before we talk, call a vote on Amendment Number Two?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I think our position remains the same, that we think that's the amendment that would be an appropriate action for the council to take, to adopt the towing manual, and move forward with any future changes being adopted by the council.
All right. With that being said... All right, any discussion? All right, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two once again.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment provides for a tow manual to set standards for police towers, requires that the tow manual be approved by ordinance of the county council, and that subsequent revisions or modifications to the tow manual be approved by resolution of the county council. Clarifies that the police may exercise lawful administrative discretion where necessary to promote public safety or welfare. Modifies the marking requirements for tow trucks to mandate three-inch letters, strikes proposed additional standards for police towing, and approves a tow manual for the county.
Okay. Again, a motion to adopt. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please...
Sorry, whose amendment is it?
Administration.
Administration. Oh, I see. Thank you.
Number Two.
From last one.
Right.
Could we hold the bill?
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
No.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
No.
Mr. Walker.
No.
Mr. Smith.
No.
Mr. Grasso.
No.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment Number Two is defeated.
All right. With that being said, that went down in flames. Okay, so now we're going to talk about the next amendment, so we got next, number, amendment number four. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number, Amendment Number Four. This technical amendment adds all paragraphs under Section 1116201(c) to allow for formatting edits.
Okay, a motion to adopt.
So moved.
I heard the second.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Walker, you have anything you want to say about this? Administration, do you have anything that you want to say?
No, sir.
Okay. With all that being said, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Four.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
I'm sorry, that was aye?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 4 is passed.
All right. Now we're moving on to Amendment Number 5. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 5.
Amendment Number 5. This amendment changes the lettering height from four to three inches and requires the towing company's phone number and truck unit number be included on each side of the tow truck.
There we go. Again, a motion to adopt?
So moved.
And I'll second it. Administration, or Mr. Walker, do you want to say anything about it?
Says what it says.
Mr. Marzick?
I'm looking.
It's all right. Take your time. We've got plenty of time, till 12 o'clock, anyway.
It's not working.
It's not working?
There you go.
There you go.
He's on.
Still on.
Go ahead, Bernie. You're on.
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to look at this comparing us to our prior amendment. I don't know if Mr. Walker can explain what this does. Is this the same language that was in our amendment?
I'm not sure what was in your amendment. Sorry. I'm not sure if this conforms with exactly what was in your amendment, but this does basically what the instructions say.
Mr. Marzick, I think what they're trying, what we're attempting to do in this here is that typically, in the regular truck lettering, they count it. Do you want to?
Do you want me to answer the question?
Well, go ahead, Ms. Tate.
Thanks. Mr. Marzick, it's similar. I think the only difference is the measuring includes underlining or shadowing. Your amendment asked for three inches in height, didn't talk about underlining or shadowing.
Took the words right out of my mouth, but just in a nicer way.
I'm going to defer to Sergeant Conklin on this.
I mean, it's a practical matter. I think it's ridiculous, because I can put a two-inch letter, a couple of underlines, and make it four inches or three inches tall. To me, it makes absolutely no sense, but I don't know, I don't know a polite way to say it other than that. But three inches is three inches. Three inches, underlining, shadowing, you get into a gray area, back to right where we were, which is whatever they feel like.
Okay, fair enough. Anybody else? All right, Madam Secretary, you want to call the roll on Amendment Number 5?
Mr. Fink.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Nay.
Mr. Trumbauer.
I don't have a mic.
Sorry about that, Mr. Trumbauer. There you go.
Aye.
You're good.
I voted aye. Okay.
Didn't hear. Okay, didn't hear. Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment Number 5 is adopted.
All right. This ought to be a good one. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 6.
Amendment Number 6. This amendment requires the county to pay towing companies for the towing of abandoned property and to reimburse the companies for documented out-of-pocket expenses incurred to dispose of the abandoned property.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
I'll get a second.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker, you want to talk about it?
Just does exactly what it said, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Is this, is this the way that the policy, I mean, is this current law?
No, no. My understanding, and the police can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but my understanding is, right now, the whole expense is on the tow. I don't believe the county does, or there's not a policy for reimbursing them. I mean, they have to pick up if there's abandoned boats on the side of the road. It's been the example I've been given on multiple occasions.
The fact that the policy has been to make them do the parts that they need to do as best they can, and then we reimburse them based on what's left. What you're proposing, again, is open-ended. They can say, I mean, you've put in there that it has to be documented out-of-pocket expenses, so if I choose to hire this gentleman over here, that gentleman for $300 an hour to scrape letters off, they can document it, and it doesn't give me any recourse, and we're back to the tow truck, back to the reasonable customer.
Well, let me ask you this. Do you think that they should be obligated to pick up boats or other abandoned stuff and have no money given to them?
No, but, I mean, you get the good with the...
Okay, well, how would you go, how would you go about reimbursing it?
Right now, rates are set by IMP, and what you've done is circumvent their authority, so they can basically charge whatever they feel.
Can I, can I tell you what we do right now?
Sure.
Especially with regard to boats?
I'm in New York.
Lieutenant Halpin, Commander of Traffic Safety Section. First of all, we arrange with the dump, for all the towers to be able to dump the boats for free. The only thing they have to do, if it's...
Can I interrupt this for a second?
Yes, sir.
So that's already a current practice?
Yes, sir. That's already a current practice. Also, my unit are...
Is that somewhere in the manual, or, because I was told otherwise?
It is not in the manual, but it's been something that's been going on for...
Okay, how's it? It's just been like a practice, but it hasn't been documented?
It's a practice that's been going by, going on in traffic safety sections in the two years that I've been there. So the only requirement they have is, if it has an engine, they have to drain the oil and the gas. That's the only requirement. They get to dump it for free. They just need our tow slip. On top of that, for every boat that they tow, we pay them a normal tow rate. Alls they've got to do is send a bill to Corporal Daughters, and she'll pay their tow bill. So we've, a number of the towers have been doing that in the two years that I've been in. If some of them haven't, I don't know why.
If that was, if that was practice, been practiced, but it hasn't been like policy, so it wasn't in the manual, so was there any way for all of the towers that are part of the program to know that that was the practice?
If I can offer, Mr. Walker, the reason we didn't put it in the manual is because every time we touch the manual, it's like setting off a firecracker. So we're not going...
Right, but I'm just asking.
We're not going to write something down only to have it turn into a, into a storm like it does every time. Most of the towers that have asked us, we've worked with them, some of the towers, I don't know how to politely tell you, other than you've been lied to. We're working with the people that work with us, but we're not going to babysit the ones who just say, "I don't want to deal with this. I don't want to tow it."
Okay, so I was just asking, if it was a policy, though, is it written down somewhere so that all of them understand what the...
No, it hasn't been changed, because, again, we're, we don't want to start up a horn's nest every time we touch it. Most of the towers understand it. Most of them have been reimbursed.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 6.
Mr. Fink.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Nay.
Mr. Trumbauer.
I need a mic.
Oh, Mr. Trumbauer, you're having a hard time tonight, aren't you? You're getting micless.
No.
There you go, buddy.
Mr. Trumbauer?
No.
Didn't hear.
No. There you go. You got light.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. Amendment Number 6 is defeated.
Okay. All right, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 7.
Amendment Number 7. This amendment removes a provision that a towing company notify the department and police of adding or removing a tow truck and arranging for inspection of a new tow truck.
Motion to adopt? So moved, and I'll second.
Does what it says. Mr. Chairman?
Administration?
I would offer, it flies counter to the concept that we want them to have three tow trucks. You're basically encouraging them to lie. If they don't have to tell me they don't have them, how do I have any teeth to enforce a previous portion of the law?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fink, can you just dig into that a little bit for me? I don't understand.
Yeah, the law is an important day.
The previous part of the law requires them to have three tow trucks, ostensibly so I will have people available for the zones they're assigned to. If they don't have to tell me they don't have said three tow trucks, they show up in August, they get a license, they now sell two tow trucks to Chief Altamari, and now I have one, but the police department has no idea that you're now violating the license.
So tow truck companies require to have three. You guys inspect the three. You know they have the three.
And this will turn it into, they can make the other, other ones disappear. Theoretically, they can make them all disappear, and I wouldn't know why.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Walker. Would they, if they were unable to respond to calls, would they lose their...
Not necessarily. Again, we don't go out of our way to pull them or suspend them. If they come up with a good story, it could be months before I realized, I mean, you've got provisions within the law now that allow them to share calls between another company. So I could, again, I could dissolve myself of my trucks and sublet it to the, to my adjacent tower, and I wouldn't know.
How many trucks, on average, do the towers who are currently operating within the system have?
How many do each? It varies. Some have the minimum, some have as many as five or six. Sometimes there's one tower that has almost a dozen, but most of them are probably three or four, right, right around the minimum.
Thank you.
So what if they turned around and they had a situation like you're saying, that they got rid of three trucks and they operated on one, but they worked the deal out with their buddy, and as long as they were able to do the job, what's the harm?
The problem will be during a special event, like a winter emergency or a hurricane, you're now expecting one truck company to cover more area than we thought they're assigned to, and a lot of them are sharing drivers. So if you're the driver for him, but now you work for him, and now the trucks are, again, the creation was that we would have someone available to be there within 30 minutes under the worst case, not, not a sunny afternoon. Most of the times when we have the problems is when it's a hurricane or something like that, where, you know, and again, we're not, we're not holding to the timeline so much, but we need someone coming. We can't have him running around covering three different areas. That's part of why in the manual, we require them to have three separate drivers, because if the same three guys drive for three separate companies, it doesn't matter how many trucks he has, I can't physically make it move. So that's the idea. If you don't, if you don't make them have the trucks, they will run at the bare minimum. I would, as a business, and I'm going to keep my expenses as low as I can. So I'm going to, I'm going to peel off what I can get away with, and I'm going to work with what I have.
Yeah. See where you're going with that. Mr. Trumbauer.
I have a mic, please.
You're just having a heck of a time.
Can the sponsor of the amendment say something more about, I mean, why this is a problem? My understanding is, it requires them to just notify of a new truck and inspection. I mean, is that, is that a burden for the companies?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. With that being said, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 7.
Mr. Fink.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
No.
Mr. Peruca.
Nay.
Mr. Trumbauer.
No.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment Number 7 is defeated.
All right. Madam Secretary, please call, please read Amendment Number 8.
Amendment Number 8. This amendment revises the definition for regular business day to exclude certain holidays.
All right. Do you need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
And I'll hit a second. And we got a tag team here. We got Mr. Walker, Mr. Smith on this one. Any one of you two want to take a stab at this, or just as it says?
As it says.
(LAUGHING).
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peruca.
Can you, can you expand on that, please? Just, I know what it says, but why?
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what. You're asking either Mr. Smith or Mr. Walker? Okay?
All right.
All right. It's up to you guys, if you want to say something, or just say as it is.
So I think, I think there were some issues with previous holidays not being covered or being covered, and so this was a way to sort of...
Yeah, you wrote the law said eight to 12, you know, Saturday holidays excluded. Didn't define what a holiday was, so we had certain participants that decided that, you know, secretary's day counted, or, if you look in the calendar, there's 144 holidays listed of different varying degrees, so basically we wanted some articulation of what a holiday was. Is it the paid holidays? Is it the federal, just something, something we can go by.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Fink, questions for the chief. When you guys did the tow manual, did you put thought and effort into it?
About 30 years' worth.
Yeah, the reasons behind everything.
Everything that's in there came about because of a problem that came up, and a solution had to be made to prevent the problem from occurring in the future.
You think you guys know what you're doing better than us sitting up here talking about towing?
Most assuredly.
Very good. Thank you. One more question, Mr. Chairman. The, what does this pertain to? I mean, this isn't the hours that you're towing. This isn't the hours of pickup. What is, what are the hours?
This is the hours that the office is available for someone to retrieve their car.
Now, I thought when we, when we adopted the state code years ago, maybe last term, the offices had to be open 24 hours, or they had to, they had to be available for pickup 24 hours, or something like that, that was mandated by the state?
That's for what we call a non-consensual trespass.
Okay, non-consensual, or as police tow. Gotcha. Thank you. Okay.
Anybody else in the administration want to chime in? Did I hear somebody?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
Doesn't this say excluding paid holidays observed by the county? So, so the example that was used of secretary's day or made-up holidays, is that...
Well, I think what he was saying is, right now, that is something that they're dealing with, which is, this language, I think, was agreed by the towers and by the police department, that this needed to be added to clarify that you can't just say we're closed for secretary's day.
Because you used to just say closed for holidays, but it didn't define what a holiday was. So you're, this actually is a good, a good change.
Right. So you're supportive of this?
Yes, you're, yes.
I like when we play nice together. This is good. Okay, with that being said, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 8.
Mr. Fink.
I need a mic, but I'm going to aye.
Say it. Go ahead, Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 8 is adopted.
All right. Madam Secretary, you want to please read Amendment Number 9?
Amendment Number 9. This amendment adds definitions for winching and redemption area.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Got it. And we've got some technical terms here. Winching and redemption area. Okay. With that being said, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, this was just an effort by the police department to sort of define and clarify what winching was as a, as a capability within the towing industry, I guess, and so I think they were okay with this particular provision. So that's exactly what it does. It just defines what winching is.
Got it. Okay. Administration?
This is just taken from the tow manual.
You guys are okay with this, or no?
Yeah.
Okay. With that being said, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 9.
I need a mic.
I need a mic.
We're just having a heck of a time with electronics around here, aren't we? All right, I'm lighting everybody up. There you go. Full house.
No, 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 we're not going to...
I forgot you. Go ahead.
Joanne needs her mic.
All right, we lost one.
We'll do one at a time. One at a time. Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 9 is adopted.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 10.
Amendment Number 10. This amendment adds a requirement that towing companies participating in the police-initiated towing program maintain a fax number or email address for receiving documents.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
And I heard, I heard a double there. We're good. All right, so we have tag team of All right, so we have Tag Team and Mr. Walker, Mr. Smith on this one. Either one of you two want to say anything about this or as it is?
As it is, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith, say anything? You're all good and, okay, good enough. Administration, want to chime in?
This looks like it's taken from our tow manual.
Yes, it was.
Okay, warm and fuzzy again. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Ten.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number Ten is adopted.
Look at this. You guys are on the roll. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Eleven.
Amendment Number Eleven. This amendment adds times that inspections of tow vehicles may be conducted by the police department, and specifies that tow truck operators are not to be frequent violators of criminal or motor vehicle laws.
Motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Got it. Anybody want to say anything? Mr. Smith, Mr. Walker?
I believe this was also an agree, a provision that was sort of agreed upon by the police and the towing industry as well.
Okay.
Is that right?
Sounds good to me. I haven't heard anything. I got a lot of nods, but it looks like we're okay. Mr. Marsick?
Yes.
All right, with that being said, Madam Secretary, you want to call the roll on Amendment Number Eleven?
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number Eleven is adopted.
We're on a roll here. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Twelve.
Amendment Number Twelve. This amendment revises code references for causes for denial, revocation, or suspension of a towing license.
Motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, this provision, on the police side of the House, I'm not sure that the towers were fully on board with this, but it does still enable the police departments to have some sort of mechanism to provide management of the tow truck companies.
Okay. Mr. Peruka, do you want to say something?
I'm just curious.
Administration?
I don't think this is correct, Mr. Chairman. I think that there's mistakes in the sections of the transportation article that are listed here. So we would ask you to oppose this amendment.
It's copy.
Say something, Ms. Tate. Go ahead, you're right.
Those are the sections that the police department asked for. That's what I'll say.
Okay. You heard that, right? She's claiming that's what's there.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fink.
Administration's opposition just due to technical, just because those title numbers are wrong, or is it the premise of the amendment?
I think it's missing sections that should be included in that, based on what my notes are. Again, we got...
You want more included, but...
Correct.
As it is today, with the sections that are included, are you supportive of it?
I'm not sure of that question.
So right now, there's one, two, three, there's four sections. You're saying, oh, there should be six or seven or whatever it is. But the four that are included, should they be included?
Yes.
So then, it's okay to, you would support this, but you'd like to see something else with another three sections added.
Well, I don't see that amendment next, so I would say that it doesn't have a sufficient amount of the titles in this section.
But these four sections belong.
So that's what we're trying to figure out right now. Some of the sections jump out at 16 licensing, driver's licensing, so we know that one needs to be included. We're trying to figure out what a couple of the others that are a little bit more esoteric right now.
This is one, this one is taking out of this code.
Let's just go ahead and pass this then, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
At least know these things.
The chief?
Make a motion that we hold this amendment towards the end. We can always come back to it.
I'll second that motion.
Or we can just turn around, and it seems we can just pass it, and then...
There's a motion that's been seconded, too.
You guys want to hold?
To the end of this process.
Okay. Madam Secretary, you want to call the roll on holding Amendment Number Twelve until the end?
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. The motion to hold Amendment Number Twelve is adopted.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think the corrections need to have 13, 16, and 24 added. They need to have a bracket around 12, 3, 107 rather than of the code. So I don't know if Ms. Corby or someone else can redraft the amendment, but that's the issue.
Say it again, Bernie.
Ms. Blair Cosmeyer said that three should be, the bracket should be after 107 rather than after of this code.
I'm talking about the titles.
And then, the title should be 11, 13, 16, 17, 21, 22, and 24. So 13, 16, 24 need to be added.
Should read, I don't know if it's a law, it should read... It violates any provision of bracket section 13-3-107 of and bracket this title, or titles 11, 13, 16, 17, 21, 22, 24.
It's on a roll. We're in process here. All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Thirteen.
Amendment Number Thirteen. This amendment adds a notice provision for certain vehicles upon which the police department has placed holds.
Motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second. Okay. This is Mr. Walker, Mrs. Smith. Anybody want to say anything, or is this as it pretty much says again?
This is also provision that the police had initially, and the towing were...
You guys are happy with it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Thirteen.
I need a mic.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number Thirteen is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Fourteen.
Amendment Number Fourteen. This amendment modifies the required forms of payment to remove the cash-only payment option for police-initiated tow, and makes the forms of payment consistent for non-consensual towers and police-initiated towers, and amends the receipt requirement to include itemized receipts.
Okay. Motion to adopt.
So moved.
I'll second. Smith?
This is essentially, I'm not sure the towers are completely on board with this one, but this one allow, essentially allows a credit card option for payment for folks who are retrieving their vehicles.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, because not everybody walks around with cash. I guess the only, the only negative thing that could come out of that is if someone used a charge card and then tried to turn around and argue to the credit card company that it wasn't allowed, and then they could get stiff that way, you know? I guess...
But that could happen with any industry that we're in, technically, if you think about it. If we go to a grocery store, we can say, we go to, you know...
Okay. I'm okay. Not that it matters to me. What do you guys want to do, administration? Mr. Marsick, chief?
I think we're supportive, as I just, the question is for Mr. Smith, is this says you shall provide evidence to the department that you, it doesn't say you have to accept it. Is that sufficient to say that you have to provide evidence?
That's current code.
Right, I know, but does that mean that you have to accept a credit card?
Say it, Ms. Tate.
Yes. I mean, right now, the way the law is set up, non-consensual towers have to provide for having credit card or ATM on-premise, so somebody, if you are a non-consensual attorney and say, I have to pay in cash, or I'm a police star and say, you have to pay in cash, the non-consensual tower has to also offer the credit option, and if then, or also a personal check, if they don't want to take that, they have to do that. Nobody wants to take personal checks. But the police towers right now have the option, I believe, to say, we only take cash. And it's been the request from the police department that the rules be changed so they're consistent, so all towing companies have to offer the credit card option to someone in order to redeem their car.
Okay. So I understand that, but I'm guessing that this says you provide evidence to the department confirming acceptance.
Right. That means you have to accept two nationally-recognized credit cards. And that's been, that language has been in the code since the 2009 rewrite of the towing sections. So, and that's sort of what's been in place since then. So I don't know whether the police department has an issue with that, having, getting somebody to prove that they're doing it. Or the inspections and permits, because inspections and permits has to see that evidence when they give a non-consensual towing company a license.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Fink. Why do we require them to take any form, specific form of payment? I mean, I don't see why, as a county or as a government, we would say, you have to accept cash, you have to accept credit cards, you have to accept a check. It's business. I'm sorry, Ms. Davis. More to the sponsor than to our...
Well, that's, Mr. Smith is the sponsor.
So I think, you know, I think what we're trying to do is be consistent, so if we're going to do it for the non-consensual, where they have the option, I think it's probably appropriate to have the police-initiated tow have the same standards.
Well, we were forced with the non-consensual, right? Wasn't that, was that a state law that we brought in?
No, Councilman Fink, actually, our law that requires payment is actually predates the state towing task force, and actually, our provision was looked on as a model in terms of, I think you've heard the chief say in the past, that this is a consumer protection statute or ordinance. And part of the issue is, individuals were finding, they got there in the middle of the night, and they couldn't get $350 in cash to redeem their car, but they had a credit card, or they had an ATM card that they could use where their money was. So the alternative was, you were finding people in the middle of the night not being able to get their car because they had to leave from wherever they were, hopefully no more than 10 miles from where the towing was, to find some way to pay for their car. So the point of this was, yes, the, in order to obtain a county license to work in our county, yes, they do say what kind of payment you need to have. And the reason for that is, people, there was a problem for people being able to get their vehicles, and then the result being, the next day, you're paying $25 a day in storage, you're paying this, you're paying this, until you can get a ride from somebody else to get 15 or 20 miles or whatever to where your car is. So there's a reason why, and as well as with the police towing, you know, they're having the option to go out and obtain additional business even more above non-consensual. So the police department asked for this in order to have some consistency and to enable individuals to have the regularly-accepted forms of payment that people use for all types of other goods and services in the county. So that's why.
But as a government, we don't require any other business to provide, to accept credit cards, is that right? And in fact, the county just started accepting credit cards for some services. So it just sounds ridiculous that we're going to require, and maybe we do it on other parts, but it wasn't with my support. Very good.
Well, not everybody's a baller like you, Mr. Fink, that has a lot of money in their pocket all the time, okay?
I'd be shocked if I had more than $3 on me.
I had to throw that in there. Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did we ever hear whether the administration supports this one?
I think you're still kicking it around.
Oh, okay.
Chief, what do you think?
I mean, oh.
Either one of yous, it doesn't matter.
We're in favor of this.
You're okay with it? All right, with that being said, let's move forward. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Fourteen.
Mr. Fink.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
I'm going to go with Mr. Fink, nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Amendment Number Fourteen is adopted.
Okay, that was interesting. All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Fifteen.
Amendment Number Fifteen. This amendment clarifies that tow truck operators are required to promptly notify the tow company of any new violations of criminal or motor vehicle laws.
Motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we got it. We got Mr. Walker, Mr. Smith again. It says what it says. You want to chime in?
Says what it says.
And I believe this is also a provision that was concurred by the police and...
I think this is a good amendment. I mean, bottom line, would you want to, you have somebody towing a truck that's a criminal all over the thing? I mean, I think it makes sense to me, right? No? Chief?
Yes.
Chief's shaking his head. Okay, with that being said, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Fifteen.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Need a mic, Mr., there you go. Oh, there you go.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number Fifteen is adopted.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Sixteen.
This amendment provides for the administrative appeal of a complaint related to a police-initiated tow and the relevant procedure.
Okay, motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Are we going to double and triple? Okay, so we have Mr. Walker, Mr. Smith on this thing. Do you want to say anything, Mr. Smith, Mr. Walker?
Nope.
Pretty much says what it says?
Yes, sir.
That would being said...
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peruka.
I should have said this on Amendments Two through 415 or whatever, but I'm just a little bit curious, to use a diplomatic word. We haven't seen any of these things except, what time did we get these? This evening?
7:15.
And I, I kind of feel, I feel like there's something wrong with the process.
7:17, maybe? I'm not sure. I didn't look at the exact time.
So, no, we got them before 7 o'clock.
I did not.
You did not. Well, they were, they were, well, I don't know what time I got it, but I feel like we're not really doing this process justice. And again, I'm not trying to chastise you, but when sponsors just say, well, it says what it says, well, that begs the question of, what's the reason we're doing this? What's, why are we...
So, Mr. Peruka?
It says what it says, okay, but why? Yeah.
So these were, actually, the ones you see with Mr. Walker and Mr. Smith most, if not all, I think, were concerns that were raised by the police department during the various testimonies that we've had. And the towing industry as well also weighed in and concurred with those same changes. So the ones you really see us jointly on, they're kind of both agreed upon, or at least stated concerns, and so that's why they're here in this process. This is simply just adding it to the code, so.
And I thank you for that, and I respectfully thank you for that. I just, it's just a little awkward to be trying to determine where you stand on this when...
Yeah, I agree.
If there's, there may or may not be a more serious issue that I'm not sure. It's a little hard to read what the administration's just kind of trying to adjust it and give us a nod for where they're coming from, and it's just...
I think anything, Mr. Peruka, that puts a clamp on the industry and some type of regulation administrations for, that's my take. So anything that they feel like there's more regulation, a better clamp on the situation, they're probably in favor. That's the way it appears to me.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, with that being said...
Mr. Chairman, just a question on this. I guess for Mr. Smith or Mr. Walker, but just want to make sure that you're relying on inspection and permits to request the hearing. Is that correct? Not the police department?
I think that was my intent.
Or is it the police department's request to the hearing?
Say again, Ms. Tate.
I guess my question is, what does the administration think it is? Because this is one of the ones that was sent over from last week via the police department to Mr. Smith. If the department reference, when it says a department in the towing code, that means inspections and permits.
Right.
The hearing is with the police department. So to the extent that the complaint goes to the police department and then it's up to...
No, the hearing is with IMP.
Well, in here, it says, we're hearing with the police department, which is the language that I got. So... If it needs to be changed, now is the time to know that.
Mr. Smith, did you want to say something?
Let me jump in here. Get a mic. Took the language out of some documents that I had received, and that specific provision was basically just copied as is.
Let me just jump in real quick. Dan Kane, inspection and permits. The way it works today, the police would ask our department for a hearing, and when we chair the hearing, I do. So, whatever this says seems to contradict that.
Well, everybody kind of looks like a deer standing in headlights.
We would ask you to oppose this amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to just kind of put this on the side again, or do you want to vote it down? What do you want to do?
We would ask you to oppose it. This is not the correct process.
I mean, I'm willing to withdraw.
What do you want to do, Mr. Smith? You and Mr. Walker?
Withdraw if the other sponsor is.
I'm fine with withdrawing.
I'm fine with withdrawing.
It doesn't leave a procedure in place, though.
All right. So, let's table number sixteen, why Ms. Tate puts the shuffle to it, okay?
No, I think we're going to withdraw.
Yes? Or you want to call a vote?
I think we should just withdraw. We're going to withdraw Amendment Number Sixteen.
Withdraw? Okay. We're going to withdraw. And who are the ones that... First and second?
We don't need that for a withdrawal.
You don't need... Okay. My bad. Getting ahead of myself sometimes. Okay. With that being said, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Seventeen.
Amendment Number Seventeen. This amendment removes a requirement from current code that police-initiated tow procedures be promulgated, adds a requirement that a police tow manual... That includes forms and procedures be prepared, and adds a requirement that any subsequent changes to the police tow manual be approved by resolution of the County Council.
Here, how about that? Motion to adopt.
So move.
I'll second that. That sounds like why we're here the whole time. Administration?
This is my amendment. Mr. Chairman. And so, essentially, what this is doing... Because, look, this whole process has been just a very sort of cumbersome and ugly process to some extent. And what I'm trying to do is sort of meet in the middle. I think that there are valid concerns with both the towing industry, and I think there are valid concerns that the police have raised on their ability to be able to manage the process. And essentially, whether it's via code or via manual, at least in my opinion, certainly, I believe the end state is that there will be a fair process that's enacted that allows the police to review and request changes, and it's done in a manner that allows... Gives them the flexibility to do that, but still bring it before this body to be able to approve those changes. So, I thought it was very appropriate to still consider the manual process whereby, you know, future changes could still be changed by us or requested by us via the police, but it gives them that flexibility, at least some teeth, to be able to manage somewhat of that process. So, that's essentially what this amendment with the manual includes, that in future iterations of code changes.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith. Sit. Mr. Walker.
Mr. Smith, this doesn't appear to... Maybe it's a question for Ms. Tate. I'm not sure. It seems to indicate that the Police Department can prepare a tow manual without initial approval by the Council. Is that accurate?
That appears accurate as far as putting it together.
So, they can draft a manual and have it say whatever they want, and there's no... They don't have to come forward?
No, after this, they're going to have to bring a manual for the Council to review.
But initially, it doesn't look like the initial... It just says, "They shall prepare a manual to include the forms and procedures required by the department."
Right.
"Revisions or modifications to the tow manual shall be approved by resolution." So, what it sounds like it's saying is that the manual... The initial manual is drafted by them with no edits or input from the Council. And only when they change it going forward do they have to come to the Council.
Revisions is... I got your point, Mr. Walker. That's what it sounds like.
So, they can draft the first one to be whatever they want, and then if they change it, then they have to bring it to us. That's the way I read it.
I think it was the intent to sort of have that an issue, working party with the Police Department to develop that first manual and subsequent changes. At least, that was my intent.
But, Mr. Smith, who would be working with them to draft that manual? Because right now, it just leaves it to them to draft it without any input from us or anyone.
That's fair. I'm... I think someone from this body could certainly be a part of that process. I assumed that we were going to be a part of that process.
Well, it's not clearly spelled out.
And that's fair. That's fair.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fink.
Mr. Walker, what I think you're suggesting is that we wouldn't... We, as a body, would not approve the manual. Not so much that we're not on a committee that's helping to write it.
Well, there's no committee on there. There's not...
No, sure. But I think the point that you brought up was, hey, that we're not going to approve the initial manual?
That's what it seems to read to me. I mean, I'm not... Ms. Tate, I don't know if you have suggestion on that or your input on that, I guess.
If you want to clarify the language to say, "To prepare a tow manual to be approved by the County Council," and then any revisions, but you could add that. I mean, if you think that makes it clear, to me, it's kind of...
Mr. Chairman.
It has to be forms and procedures. It can't be any more than that. So...
What... Amendment Two that we just voted down, didn't it do that? Didn't that essentially take the tow manual? We would approve it?
Correct.
And that's what this amendment does as well?
Correct.
So, what's the difference?
Actually, this does even one step less of that.
Yes. I was going to say, this is actually one step less.
And what's that step?
This doesn't approve the manual. The previous amendment approved the manual.
Correct.
This just says you can draft a manual.
It's my understanding, the manual that was submitted was not acceptable, and therefore, the amendment was voted down.
Amendment Two had the county or the Council approving the manual and anything in the future. Amendment, whatever this is...
Has us sitting down with them, developing that first initial...
It doesn't...
At least, that was my intent.
How do you require us to sit down with them?
And if we need to sort of adjust the language to address that concern, I'm okay with that.
Doesn't our say come in when the manual's before us and we vote on it? Just like the building code with Mr. Kane? He brings us a building code. We say yes, no. We amend it as we want, and then we pass it.
Correct. That was the original intent of Amendment Two.
Wouldn't that be our input on the manual code? You all bring us a manual code. We'll amend it as we see fit, whether we add or take away, and then that's our say in the towing manual. And that's exactly what Amendment Two did that failed. Now, we got Amendment Seventeen. I don't think any of us know what the hell it does right now, and it does things that we don't think it does, and it doesn't do things that we do think it does. But essentially, what we want is Amendment Two.
No. Actually, I think what I want is for us to sit down to help develop that first initial manual, approve it by the Council, and then subsequent changes are approved by resolution for the Council as well.
But that's what Amendment Two did?
No. Amendment Two approves the current manual right now. It takes it... We're not involved in the creation of it. It's already exists.
Right. And then we'd amend it. But we could amend it as we're doing now. We continue to say, "Oh, we're going to take this out and take that out."
No, I think it's a little bit easier when you start from ground zero and build the...
Well, we wouldn't be starting with ground zero. We'd be starting with their current manual. They would bring us their manual at the next meeting. So, here it is. And then we would say, "We're going to take this out. We're going to add this."
Hold on.
Mr. Fettman needs a mic.
He's got it.
Got it. Amendment Two had two parts to it. It provided that the tow manual would be approved by ordinance. It attached the existing tow manual, and it approved it. So, what I'm hearing, and it approved that existing tow manual. So, it was two steps. It provided... It put in the code that the County Council shall approve the tow manual by ordinance and shall approve subsequent revisions thereto by resolution. It then had Section Two of the amendment that the tow manual, a copy of which is attached here to as Exhibit A, is hereby approved. It sounds like what you're saying is the problem was that Section Two of Amendment Two. You did not want to approve the tow manual as existed.
Amendment Two. But had we... I support Amendment Two. Had we had Amendment Two pass, we would have brought in the current manual.
Correct.
Then we would have went to Amendment Number Four, and we would have started to change that manual.
That's not true. The manual would have been approved with this bill without any opportunity for the Council.
Well, then what would have happened to Amendment Number Four, Amendment Number Five, Amendment Number Six, and every other amendment that passed?
Those would have been put into the code as opposed to the tow manual, as they would be if this bill ultimately passes.
Mr. Fink, they would have duplicated what's in the tow manual.
Correct.
Which is why we said from the beginning, we didn't think it should be put into the code, that we thought it should be adopted as the manual. That's why we were pushing Amendment Number Two.
But once the manual is adopted... No. Once the manual is submitted to us as a bill, so a future bill, it's the manual, we would be able to amend it and change it as we saw fit as a council. And then that would be the new manual, correct?
Are you referring to under Amendment Seventeen or...
Amendment Two. No, you know what? Two's dead. Seventeen.
Under Seventeen... Seventeen does not appear to have a provision that requires the approval of the original manual.
Right.
Right. So, we create a new manual. You all would create a new manual.
The Police Department would create a new manual.
Which is probably the current manual you would give us, and then we would go and amend it.
That's not provided in the code.
What's not provided in the code?
Not provided in the amendment. Excuse me. The Amendment Seventeen states, "The Police Department shall prepare a tow manual to include the forms and procedures required by the department for participation in the police-initiated tow program," period. So, to Mr. Walker's point, there's no subsequent sentence which would read, "The County Council shall approve the tow manual by ordinance."
And I think that's Mr. Smith's intention.
That's the fault of Amendment Seventeen, though, right? That's what we want to fix.
With that being said, let's somebody else, Mr. Walker. Mr. Pruski, did you want to chime in real quick?
Just for you. Just real quick. I'm going to put my teacher hat on. Sorry, guys. I think there's a disagreement over the process about the manual and whether the manual should be approved or the Council have a say in what should be in the process. That's what this whole debate is over. Secondly, and I'm going to speak to Mr. Smith, I believe his intention is that all these amendments that go through, if approved or not approved, a manual will be created based upon that. Does everyone get that? I mean, that's really where this came from. You know, we had the manual. People maybe didn't agree or disagreed. Then there were amendments put forward in the county code, obviously, to have them approved. And what Mr. Smith is saying now, a manual be created based upon everything that was passed, and then anything further after that would come based upon resolution.
That's it.
If I'm taking it correctly. I don't know if Ms. Tate's listening, but that's just the way I view it.
That's the way I view it, too. With that being said, Mr. Walker?
Mr. Fetterman. If there is a manual created, and the way this amendment was drafted, and I think maybe I'll speak also back to Amendment Two, sort of, is it my understanding... Is my understanding correct that if that manual was to be changed, the entire manual would be brought to us, would not allow the Council to make edits to the manual, or it would just be an up or down vote on the manual?
That's correct.
So, if there was language in the manual that we didn't care for, we didn't like, or we thought should be stronger or looser, whatever, we couldn't really change the manual. We'd just have to vote it down.
You mean in the original manual that...
I mean, any... Like, if any... I'm just talking about, let's say, going forward. Like, let's say there's a manual created somehow, right? And then we're looking at this manual, and you guys decide, "Hey, we need to make a change to it."
Correct.
And you bring us a new manual. We can't go in and make any tweaks or edits to the manual. We can just say, "Yes, we like the new manual," or "No, we don't like the manual."
In fact, the way this is... This Amendment Seventeen is drafted, they would be bringing the revisions to you, and you would do an up or down vote on the revisions.
Correct. And was that also the intent of the office and administration in Amendment Two as well?
No. Amendment Two provided that the initial tow manual would be approved by ordinance of Council.
Right. And then, but going forward, edits or revisions to that tow manual would be up or down votes on the manual as it was brought to us, again, not able to edit the manual at all in any way.
That's correct.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. With that being said, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Can I just get a quick yes or no? The administration support or oppose this? Because I've listened to this for ten minutes, and I'm just curious.
I'm sure they support it because it gives them the freedom.
I think we would support... I mean, this seems to go after what we were trying to do with Amendment Two, which was to put the manual... But it just... It defeats the purpose of Amendments Two through sixteen, right? I mean...
Well, that's what I was wondering, if this kind of presses the reset button. We just passed and defeated a number of amendments. But does this wipe all of that clean?
No. What this does is those amendments that we previously changed, added those to the code. Those were code changes.
So, they stay regardless?
They will stay regardless. Unless this bill fails. The manual will be the sort of working document going forward on how to actually implement the process.
But the code would supersede anything in the manual.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
Maybe someone... Maybe Mr. Fetterman. I'm not sure. Or one of the officers. The manual that existed in September when the licensed towers came into the system, that's one manual. And the manual we received in Amendment Number Two is a completely different manual. Is that correct? I mean, not completely different. There's form and substance to what was in there, that there's a lot of additions to it.
My understanding is there were minor revisions made based on the language in the, I believe it was Amendment One, to this bill that you provided.
Yeah, but there was also this...
Go ahead, Ms. Tate.
One of the key provisions that was removed from the bill initially was the regulatory or policymaking authority of the Police Department to just go add things to the manual without the County Council having some say. And some of that language that sort of reserved that role-making authority, so Police Department was contained in the manual that was provided as an exhibit with Amendment Number Two. And I think that was one of the chief objections, was one of the main things that brought us to this discussion was the fact that a number of things were being added to the manual that probably should have been addressed within the code. Because to the extent that they added requirements that were already recovered, discussed in the code, and they added on to those requirements. So, that was one of the reasons, I think, that we ended up having Bill Thirty-four in the first place. So, that's where we are, and that is why Amendment Two failed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Tate, just from a procedural standpoint, does this need to be held and to be modified? Or is that being done now?
We are... We're working on another one.
All right. Thank you.
So, we play Seventeen.
Mr. Smith.
Okay.
I thought you said your intent was to do this.
My intent is to do it. She's modifying it.
No, I'm saying, is your intent to have the police draw up a tow manual?
Yes.
Okay.
With the inclusion of all the stakeholders involved in that initial tow manual. That was my intent behind this.
Okay.
But that's not the way it was drafted.
And that's what... And she's going to modify it, too?
Right. And so, Mr. Smith, is withdrawing this amendment?
If...
If the second is assenting to that?
All right. So, we're going to withdraw this amendment?
Correct. So, we're withdrawing this amendment. Another one is being produced at that sentence about the initial one being approved by the Council as well.
All right. With that being said, Seventeen being pulled. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Eighteen.
Amendment Number Eighteen. This amendment revises code references for causes for denial, revocation, or suspension of a towing license.
Motion to adopt.
So move. So move.
All right. Got it. Mr. Smith?
Now, this was the updated Number Five, right?
Number... Yeah.
So, this was the...
They got the bracket change.
Correct.
Amendment Number Twelve with the...
All right. So, everybody's happy with this? Well, yes? Yeah, I think they were okay with it. Chief? Barney?
Yes.
It was just a bracket change here.
And the numbers.
And you added titles to it. You added titles to it as well.
Okay. With that being said, Madam Secretary, please call the roll of Amendment Number Eighteen.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Eighteen is adopted.
All right. Now, we're on...
Are we going to withdraw Twelve?
Come again?
Are we going to withdraw?
Yes. Withdraw Twelve.
Now, we're on Nineteen. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Nineteen.
Amendment Number Nineteen. This amendment provides for the administrative appeal of a complaint related to a police-initiated tow and the relevant procedure.
All right. Motion to adopt.
So move.
I'll second.
This is the clarifying amendment from Amendment... I forget the number.
It was a while ago.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Marsick? This is one we talked about a few moments ago.
We're good with this.
You agree or don't?
I think so.
He's just beat.
Trying to read it, Mr. Chairman.
That's all right. Do your thing, Barney. No...
It's helpful to read them before you say yes or no on them.
That's good. That's the way we try to operate around here. This is very similar because you remember my bill, Sixty-Sixteen. Remember, we were talking about someone being pulled out of rotation and all that stuff, and we put a specific amount of time that a case had to be heard unless it was a threat to safety. to safety, then they got, they weren't pulled out of rotation. So you've got everything spelled out here in a specific amount of time, which I think is probably a good thing. If it's no more, we'll get to you when we can. Yes, no, maybe?
We're okay with this.
All right, with that being said, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 19.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven of the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number 19 is adopted.
All right, now, we were waiting for another amendment coming down?
Yes.
Okay, so we want to just hold this bill towards the end, or no?
How close are we?
Keep going.
Let's keep going.
That's what I'm saying.
Let's keep going.
That's it. So we take a motion to hold this to the end of the meeting and call a vote?
So moved.
Second.
Joanna's shaking her head. Let's find out why before we do that.
What's the problem, Joanna?
This is last evening. This bill can be amended.
Yeah, we're holding it. We're not, we're just waiting till the amendment comes out, and then we're going to vote the amendment, and then we're going to, um-
Okay, you're not holding it till the end of the-
We're going to move it to be heard on July 17th.
You're not holding it till the end of the meeting?
We are holding it to the end of the-
Holding it-
I'm worried that the meeting might go past.
Midnight?
No, it won't. It'll be fine.
We're not going to let it.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we got a second. Madam Secretary, please call the roll to hold 3417 towards the end of the meeting.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven the affirmative, none of the negative. Motion to hold vote on Amendment Number, on Bill Number 3417 to the end of the meeting is passed.
Got it. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5317 as amended.
Bill Number 5317 is amended in ordinance concerning zoning administrative hearings, hearing times.
Okay. All right, this is, um, this is yours truly's bill here, and, um, basically what we had here is that, you know, I was in a uproar on how I just felt things should be handled and shouldn't be handled, and I just think the public should have an input on pretty much everything we can possibly get them involved with. So initially, I had my meeting set for the zoning, any zoning changes to be moved from 10:30 in the morning, that most of the population is probably working, to move to 7:00. Mr. Walker came down, and he talked about meeting them halfway till 6:00 and taking away, I think, what was the other issue?
Special exception.
Special exception, and I'm okay with that.
Just leaving up zonings.
Yep, I'm okay with that. All right, so before we go into administration, have anything to say before we have a public hearing on 5317 is open?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marsick, the county executive's office, with me at table Greg Swain, Office of Law, Lori Rhodes from Plaine and Zoning. We continue to oppose this bill. Think that this is really a unnecessary change for office administrative hearings. We think the current system works well, that this has become a, or will be a burden on the staff at Plaine and Zoning. You all received notice from Ms. Rhodes this week, explained the impact this will have on her and her staff, so we would ask you to oppose this bill.
Okay. And I'll just chime in one thing, I'll say once again, if, to me, it would think, and if you know a hearing is coming up by specific people or whatever need to be there, instead of them having to come in at 9:00 or 8:30, whenever the county starts, then if they're going to be for an evening hearing at 6:00, then my suggestion would be is just to move them up till 9:00 or 10:00, whatever the case may be, so they're working the same amount of hours. And the way I kind of look at it is, you know, and I'm going to sit up on a grand standpoint here, I think it's important that the public is involved with things that start to change around them, and if the employees have a hard time to find that, you know, then I guess maybe they should seek a job somewhere else that they're more friendly or with, or something they can handle. But I don't think the constituents should have to, you know, be put in the dark because most of them are working at 10:30 in the morning. And I understand people don't want to work late, but hey, you know, I work two jobs like it is here and sit here doing this for the people, and I mean, that's the way I feel about it. So with that being said, Jim, want to say anything, Ms. Rhodes, or nothing? Because I know you already said it last time. Otherwise, I'm going to get into public hearing.
I mean, I'd agree with you.
That's fair.
Targetly, because-
We agree to disagree.
Your constituents also want staff there at 8:00, our work hours from 8:00 to 4:30, and we have a small staff with a growing population, so 10:00 doesn't always work, because, you know, constituents are waiting for responses, so coming in at 9:00 or 10:00 will not resolve the issue. Again, the bill looks better, but I still think it will impact the staff in a negative way.
That's fair enough. But then, in either case, if they had to work a little extra, they'd get probably overtime or something like that, right?
No.
They don't get paid anything?
It's comp time, and also-
Okay.
The loss of institutional knowledge is very important and costly to the county as well.
Got it.
And that's something that you want to keep in mind. They just, I don't want them to quit, because they do bring with them a lot of institutional knowledge that takes years to obtain.
You know one thing I learned in the businesses that I was in? I thought that the catering company I was working for was going to go under when I quit, okay? Because I could whip out 10 weddings with 30, 40 items, and my stuff came out perfect. But you know what? I realized when I walked out of there, the show continued. No one is irreplaceable.
I totally agree.
So institutional knowledge will be somebody that's more ambitious to want to take over that spot. That's the way I learned.
But it's also costly to the county as well.
Okay. With that being said, all right, so what we're going to do is we're going to open up the public hearing on 5317. Anybody want to chime in, say anything about it? See no movement in the crowd when they close the public hearing on 5317? All right, we have, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5317 as amended?
Bill Number 5317 is amended in ordinance concerning zoning administrative hearings, hearing times.
Okay.
Do we have a technical limit, Mr. Chair?
Yes. I'm seeing over here, is there any discussion? Okay, there's a technical amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2.
Amendment Number 2. This is a technical amendment to conform the purpose paragraph to the body of the bill to reflect the change hearing time.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 2.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven of the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number 2 is adopted.
All right, because we had a technical amendment, we can call a vote tonight, so Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 5317 as amended.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Nay.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, none of the negative. Bill Number 5317 is amended, is adopted.
All right, move right along.
Point of order, Madam Secretary, I believe there was one vote in opposition. Did you say none?
I saw some.
Mr. Peruka.
Six, six in the affirmative, one in the negative.
Sorry, I misheard. I thought you said none. It rhymes with one.
Okay.
Okay.
Close enough. We're on our wits tonight. All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5917. This ought to be a good one.
Bill Number 5917.
That's okay.
An ordinance concerning public safety, animal control, dangerous and vicious animals, Lilo's law.
All right. We have a whole host of sponsors on here, and I just want to let everybody know that I am an animal lover big time, so I am also co-sponsor of my name on this. But initially, start it with Mr. Fink, Mr. Walker, Mr. Trumbauer, and whoever else wants to chime in. So, Mr. Fink?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, I think, I think the council remember the meeting probably two months ago, when some of my constituents came down and spoke about Lilo and the brutal attack that happened to the animal. And if you don't remember that hearing, I think you certainly remember the photos that came of the aftermath of that attack. And that's essentially where this bill came from, that hearing and that incident. What we had was, we had a small animal that was attacked, it was completely unprovoked, by a much larger animal. Lilo was the dog that was attacked and killed. The pictures gave a very, very clear picture of exactly what happened that day. And come to find out, after that attack, the county didn't really have any authority or clear mechanism of enforcement to go after or to deal with the attacking dog. And after talking to the chief of police, and talking to the office of law, what could be done, there was not a whole lot that could be done, other than, I believe, we held the dog for two weeks, gave it back, put on some wishful restrictions on that dog, and hoped that the property or the property owner would follow it. And this bill would really give the county the teeth, or the authority, probably a better word, to be able to deal with that dog or any dogs moving forward, in that it would give the county the ultimate ability to euthanize an animal that is deemed vicious. A vicious animal would be an animal that attacks either a person or another, or another animal, a domestic animal. This would not be an attack that happens within the animal's property while that animal is being injured, while that animal is protecting or defending a human being. So this is essentially going after that dog that attacked Lilo. The bill also does a few other things. One, it gets rid of the potentially dangerous animal, will no longer be calling or labeling animals as potentially dangerous or dangerous. They're either going to be vicious or they're not. It does create a registry where former dangerous and potentially dangerous dogs will go, or dogs that move in from out of county that were labeled dangerous, potentially dangerous from their jurisdictions, will go in that registry as well. And I believe I hit the highlights of this bill, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I think it's sweet. I think you did a good job. All right, so with that being said, administration, you want to chime in?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marsick, county executive's office, with me at the table Deputy Chief Cram from the Police Department, Robin Catlett from Animal Control, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. We are supportive of this bill. We have a few amendments we'll be offering at the appropriate time, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. With that being said, let's move forward. We're going to open up the public hearing on 5917. So I'm going to call everybody to come on down here at the name and course, two minutes address, like you folks have witnessed all through the night. We're going to start off with Ms. Katie Rogers, Ms. Jessica Ewing, looks like Mr. Kate, Ms. Kaitlyn Schneider, if I'm saying it right. Again, it's all Dana Love. Looks like Mr. Herb Mead, Taylor Warble, and it looks like Gloria Fuller, and Kevin Kelly. Come on down. Again, you're going to do two minutes over here, because we're going to hold strictly to it, because we're running out of time here, so when you hear that buzzer, we thank you, we know where your heart's at. All right, so we're going to start off with first Ms. Katie Rogers. I need your name and address and your two minutes, please, and thanks for coming down and visiting us tonight.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for taking the time out to here tonight, too. I know it's been a long night. My name is Katie Rogers. I reside at 7968 Union Jack Court, Pasadena. I just wanted to come here in support of Lilo's law. On May 2nd, I previously spoke in front of the county council to ask for support after my puppy, Lilo, was killed in April during a vicious dog attack. I now stand in front of you to pledge my continued support for this law, so that this tragedy does not happen to another family. Our lives have not been the same since the attack, and more importantly, since the return of the attacking dog. Due to current Anoronal County law, the dog that killed our Lilo was returned to its home and owners. In lieu of this, my husband and I do not feel the sense of safety that we once did. Every day, we are fearfully checking out our windows before stepping out of our front door to do something as mundane as get our mail, or take out the trash, or walk to our cars. We've become hyper vigilant about every sound that is around us, no longer taking walks as a couple through our community, sitting on our back porch, or simply going in the general direction of where the attacking dog lives. Our home is where we are starting a family, and was once filled with safety and love. Now we are faced with a constant fear, with constant sense of fear and uncertainty. Citizens of Anoronal County and their pets should never fear walking around their own neighborhoods. Lilo's law will ensure that pet owners are held responsible by giving the county the authority to review each attack on a case-by-case basis, thus protecting the residents and the pets of Anoronal County. Thank you.
Thank you, dear. I'm sorry for your losses, too. Sorry. Okay, Ms. Jessica Ewing?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for your time. I'll keep my spiel short and sweet, but again, I ask for everyone to support this bill.
Name and address, you know, we know who you are.
Oh, sorry. Jessica Ewing, 3455 Brookhaven Road, Pasadena. I just ask for everyone's support on this bill. It was done very well with contacting everyone, and reaching out to constituents, and working with families, as well as Animal Control, and it would be a shame to see this opportunity passed up. No one, you know, this isn't an isolated incident, and no one should walk out of their home in fear for their safety. Nothing, no law would have changed that this attack happened, but it would have changed what happened after, and I think that's where we need to start, because otherwise, you're going to see more and more attacks, because these dogs who have already attacked are being returned. So again, we do ask for your support on this bill. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for coming down. Okay, Ms. Caitlyn Schneider? Am I saying it right?
Caitlyn Schneider.
Okay.
And I live at 3489 South River Terrace, Edgewater, Maryland.
Thanks for coming out.
Thanks. So I've lived in Anoronal County my whole life. I support Lilo's law. I have a dog, and as a pet mom, this law will help pet owner responsibility and safety of not only pet owners, but communities and residents of Anoronal County. No dog should be able to be returned to their family after a vicious attack like what happened to Lilo in April. The safety of our residents of this county and their pet is what I see in this law. It will help each and every citizen of this county feel safer in their community and home. I hope you will vote for Lilo's law tonight. Thanks.
Thank you much. Mr. Herb Mead?
Yes, Herb Mead, 2827 Fennel Road.
Thanks for coming out.
Edgewater, Maryland. I'm here to support the bill. I'm the president of Gingerville Woods Association. We did have a similar attack in our neighborhood, and the vicious animal was not returned. The owners made the right decision, but if they had not made that decision, it would have torn the fabric of our neighborhood apart. We would have had neighbors pitted against each other, and we avoided that by those people making that proper decision, and we support this because we need a third party, such as Animal Control, to help in these situations. And I wanted to also say that the Animal Control did a wonderful job with us, answered every question that we had, and supported our neighborhood in great detail. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Ms. Taylor Warble?
Yes.
Thanks for coming out.
Hi, thank you. Taylor Warble, 9 Seabright Avenue, Dundalk, Maryland. And then, can we also have everybody stand up who's here to support for Lilo's law? Just to show how many people came out. Obviously, we're all here to support the law, and I think it's, it needs to happen.
Pink shirts kind of give it away, don't they?
Yeah, we kind of stand out a little bit. But I'm also a dog mom of a rescue dog, so my heart obviously breaks for Katie and Kevin. Our dogs were friends, so I know she's going to miss her a lot. But I think this is important, I'm going to try not to cry, so I'm going to keep it short. Obviously, very important to pass this law, and thank you for how everybody handled the situation, and just hopefully we can get some justice for Katie and Kevin and their dog.
Yep. Thank you so much. Okay, and we have Mr. Kevin Kelly?
Kevin Kelly.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you. 9 Seabright Avenue, Dundalk, Maryland. I have nothing prepared, but just want to support Katie and Kevin, and hopefully this bill does get passed. I have a dog myself, and I couldn't imagine being with, without her, as a family member. And I hope this bill does get passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out. And let's see, I've got everybody on the list here. Let's get this young lady up here. So I don't have you on the list, but please feel free to give your name and address and chime in.
Gloria Fuller, you called me down. 1616 Bentley Road, Edgewater, Maryland.
There you go, sorry about it.
It's okay. I'm here to support the law for, of course, your tragedy that you had, but also for communities, children, and adults like us. A similar situation happened to me back in April. My Yorkie poo was attacked in my yard. Two pit bulls had, broke through their fence, came into my yard, and chewed him up in front of me. Come to find out, three of our other neighbor's dogs had been attacked, and not killed, thankfully, but had thousands of dollars' worth of surgery put into them to keep them alive, and one of the gentlemen in my neighborhood had his hands chewed up by these dogs. The system screwed up. Please support this law.
That's good. You made it to the point how everybody feels, right at this point. Good for you. Okay, want to thank everybody for coming down. Just going to ask if anybody else wants to chime in, say anything different? You're welcome to come down.
I'm a long stuff.
There you go. You can take the executive podium if you don't want to sit.
I can sit here and talk to you.
There you go, well, thank you. Of course, you're going to say your name and address, please, and you know the-
Okay.
Yep, you're good.
Thank you, Councilman Fink, for bringing this bill forward. We appreciate that. I am a representative of District 1, District 2, and District 3. On the Animal Control Commission, I sit as chairman. I ask you to pass this law. I have seen the pictures of this attack. I have heard it through the commission. These are vicious animal attacks. They are hurting and killing our pets and attacking people. We need to do something about it. There are animal owners out there that are not responsible and not accountable. They overlook the fact that while they have bigger animals that do this damage, the people that have smaller animals really don't care. Not that we don't care, but they have an attitude that, "Go buy a bigger dog." Well, that's not the answer. I have a 24-pound dog. A 70-pound dog that hits mine, she's done. A 70-pound dog that hits mine, she's done. I have been run over by a German shepherd, a boxer, and a pit bull. And we need to do something about this before this happens more. I've already seen three cases down at Animal Control that show the destruction of these animals, that they are killing and maiming our pets too. And we need to do something about it. I appreciate you doing that, Councilman Fink. I really do. Thank you, Councilman Walker, Tom Bauer, and Councilman Grasso for your attention to this. I'm all in favor of this bill being passed, and I appreciate listening to me. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, it's beautiful. I think we all know how we feel at this point. Okay. With that being said, we're going to close the public hearing on 5917. Is there any discussion? Seeing no movement in the crowd, there are several amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
I'm going to read the bill in for vote.
That's a great idea first.
Bill Number 5917, An Ordinance Concerning Public Safety: Animal Control Dangerous and Vicious Animals - Lilo's Law.
Okay, any discussion? Of course, we don't have any.
Ms. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
Just for the record, if you can include a co-sponsor of the bill. Thank you.
Okay. All right, there are amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment 1.
Amendment Number 1. This amendment restores the definition of potentially dangerous animal and certain relevant references. Adds a condition that potentially dangerous animal orders issued before October 1, 2017, shall remain in full force and effect after the effective date of the ordinance. Adds a condition that any special licenses are subject to annual renewal. And adds a condition that any future violations of a potentially dangerous animal order may result in a dangerous animal order being issued.
Move to adopt, Ms. Chair.
You got a second?
Second.
All right, we're there. Administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this amendment, as Gray's description pretty much explains it, but as far as background, I'll defer to Mr. Swain for a little bit on the legal side of things. There was concern from the Office of Law that by removing potentially dangerous orders from the code, that existing potentially dangerous dogs would no longer be potentially dangerous. And that information could be relevant for future charges against one of those dogs. And we want to make sure that that information could still be used against those dogs in the future if there are similar or a second case from that, and that could be used for the determination with Animal Control in declaring a dog either dangerous or vicious in the future. But I'm not sure if Mr. Swain or Ms. Catlett want to add to that.
Nope.
Mr. Chair. Hey, tag team there. I'll start with Mr. Trumpauer first, then go to Mr. Walker, unless you want to yield.
No, that's fine. So, Mr. Martin, thank you for that explanation. That makes perfect sense. I guess my only concern is if we now have two different definitions, we would have potentially dangerous animal, which you say is, you know, obviously, there's some current animals labeled that way. Now, in this bill, we're defining a vicious animal. Is there any scenario going forward where an animal would be labeled potentially dangerous instead of vicious? I'm worried about setting up a two-tiered system.
Gregory Swain, Supervising County Attorney. The potentially dangerous animal designation is only for animals that have already been designated as PDA up to this date. There will be no new designations under a PDA.
It's just a legacy designation.
Exactly.
You'll only be dangerous or vicious going forward.
Right. And there's already animals that have already been identified as PDA.
I get that. So are we also -- does this legislation remove the process to declare an animal potentially dangerous?
Yes.
It does? Okay. Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
All right, Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just along those same sort of lines, I just want to make sure I'm clear on what's happening. So we're not changing what we've proposed in the bill as the new labels. So the dangerous label and the vicious label stay intact, because that was a big concern, and I think from the community and folks I talked to, because, and even some other folks that had issues previously that I had spoken to, Ms. Catlett, back, this is going back a couple of years. The potentially dangerous designation just seems sort of like vague, and people on the Board of Appeals are like, "Well, what exactly does that mean?" Because it's not really, you know, from my perspective, the dog's either, is not potentially dangerous after they've attacked and killed another dog. So I just want to make sure that we're leaving that portion intact. We're just going back to make sure that we're not letting any loose ends tie up any loose ends on the current list of dangers.
Grandfathering dangerous animals.
That's exactly right.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pruski.
Mr. Swain, I don't think, when I was on the Board of Appeals, I heard any cases when you were there. But this basically clarifies the legal definition, and if there is an appeal, it delineates between the two, and that's the purpose. I mean, it doesn't change anything. I just want, I want to be --
Well, yeah, the only thing it does is it retains the PDA designation for animals that have already been determined to be PDAs.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
And then limits to going further, going into the future, the only two designations are dangerous or vicious.
That's right.
Mr. Chair, one other question.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Swain, in the case that, well, let's say a potentially dangerous animal now comes back into the process again because they've either violated one of the things, or they've attacked another dog now, so what, so what happens then? Because they, do they automatically qualify for the vicious designation?
They'll be re-designated depending on the nature of the activity that led to them being reported again.
Okay, so they could be labeled as dangerous or vicious?
Yes.
But, got it. Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, all right, it looks like everybody's ready to go, so let's call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Mr. Fink.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Mr. Peruka.
Hi.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Hi.
Mr. Walker.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Grasso.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2.
Amendment Number 2. This amendment removes the requirement that a jurisdiction be within the state of Maryland.
Okay, motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second. You go ahead.
Silence is reasonable. Yes.
Administration? You like this, right? Because that's your deal.
Yes, this is our amendment, and I'm trying to find this in the bill, Mr. Chairman, but this is to ensure that --
If it's transferred in from --
Yeah, it's, it can only be transferred if it's from in-state, because other jurisdictions may not have the same designations. Is that correct?
Well, I think what the intent of the amendment is, is to, if, some states do have similar designations. So if another state has designated an animal under one of dangerous or vicious, then that would carry over into Maryland. The original bill dislimited that to designation within the state of Maryland.
That's right.
So now we're saying any jurisdiction that's adopted is --
People move.
That's right.
I'm sorry.
Okay. With that being said, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 2.
Mr. Fink.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Mr. Peruka.
Hi.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Hi.
Mr. Walker.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Grasso.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 3 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment 3.
Amendment Number 3. This amendment requires that a picture be included in the registry to improve the ability to identify the animal in question.
Motion to adopt.
So moved.
All right. I think it's a great idea. Administration?
This is just to add in a picture so that people can identify what the dog looks like that is being declared in the registry.
Smart idea. I like that idea. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 3.
Mr. Fink.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Mr. Peruka.
Hi.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Hi.
Mr. Walker.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Grasso.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 3 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment 4.
Amendment Number 4. This amendment changes the obligation of notification to be the responsibility of the owner of the dangerous animal.
Motion to adopt. So moved. Second.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, this is so that the dog or animal, excuse me, the animal owner is responsible for doing the mailing that's associated with notifying neighbors of a dog's designation rather than Animal Control.
Mr. Trumpauer. What if, Mr. Marzick, what if they don't?
Then it would be similar to the other restrictions that are put into place. If they are required to put up a tall fence, or required to put a muzzle on the dog, then it goes back to Animal Control, I believe, where they can then take action based on that.
So is, is your intent offering this amendment to take the burden off of the department?
Correct.
And it sounds like, well, to me, we're trading some level of assurance. Like, if the department's supposed to do it, I know you guys are going to do it. If the owner of a vicious dog is supposed to do it, maybe they don't want to send a mailer out to their neighbors because they're embarrassed, or they're fearful, or they're ashamed, or whatever. I'm just worried, like, how will you guys know they don't do it?
I'll defer to Ms. Catlett, I think, on that, because how they'd know about any other provisions that are required of the owners that are not followed.
Right, so we're already going to be making the public more aware by having the public registry. Also, in most of the cases where an incident happens, the community that's around the animal is very aware of what's going on, and if they don't receive the proper notifications, they'll be more than happy to let us know that someone is not following the order that's in place so we can take enforcement action.
So you don't have a concern that putting the burden on the owner would be some disincentive for that notice getting out?
No.
I think the intent is that because it's part of the order that the animal's released under, if it's not done, the animal can be taken, yeah, inbounded again.
Okay. You guys seem pretty confident, but --
You have to also understand that these are active investigations, so we don't just issue orders and walk away.
Okay.
So Animal Control is constantly updating their files, constantly updating the investigation, so they're there quite regularly. So we're going to know whether or not that was --
Okay. You guys have convinced me. Thank you.
Good. Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Ms. Catlett, maybe you can answer this best. How many of these cases would you say happen a year? I'm just trying to gauge what the cost, potential cost impact is, because I fear, I'm not, I'm not 100% on board that the person's going to follow through. And then how do they get the list of people within 175 feet? And then how do you, I mean, short of having them provide proof back to the Animal Control Board, or you all that, you know, through, like, I don't know, mail they got assigned for or something, how do we know that they sent it? And in their defense, how do they know, you know, how, how do they prove that they did if they say, "Oh, we put a stamp on it, put it in the mail. I'm sorry they didn't get it"?
So we can always be CC'd, but in general, in answer to your question, we handle about 2,000 animal attacks and bite cases per year. We have two animal control officers that are handling that number of investigations per year. So they're doing a lot, as it is, trying to keep up on the inspections that have to be done. As the deputy chief indicated, they try to do their very best to follow up on the cases. We make sure that owners are actually in compliance before we release the animals. So we would include in there, we would have to be CC'd, and they would have to do that prior to the release of the animal. So that would be a way that we would be able to enforce that they do it before we would release the animal back to them.
Got it. Okay. I'm more comfortable now. Thank you.
Mr. Pruski first, Mr. Fink, Mr. Smith. Mr. Pruski.
This is for Mr. Marzick or Mr. Swain. Isn't it true through administrative hearing process that these are emailed and we kept it where they're sent out? So if neighbors know that something's going on, this is on a list that's sent in terms of appeals, or someone had an issue, am I correct? Like, if there's an administrative hearing or a Board of Appeals case?
Well, there's always going to be notice to or what the complaint is.
No, but I'm saying, like, community associations or other things, you were talking about people knowing something going on. Believe me, if there's, you know, an issue, it's going to be, it's going to show up on the administrative hearing notice or a Board of Appeals case, that, that something's been heard, and the community will talk about it. So that's another avenue, I don't think, that's being mentioned here.
It's supposed to be sent to the community association president, so yes, that would be right.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Fink. Mr. Marzick, we also, I mean, we require, like, in development, the developers to do mailings and this type of stuff, too. So, I mean, this isn't completely unusual that we would put the burden on someone other than the county to put the notification out there, right?
Correct.
All right, so same process there. I mean, we, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
I'm simply going to say, I mean, in this instance, though, if, if a developer or somebody else doesn't report an infraction, it's probably no harm, like, no life, whereas in this case, potentially, another person could be harmed. But you're saying that they would have to prove or CC'd you? Did you ever consider, I don't know, a 20, I don't know what the postage and the letter, maybe it's probably somewhere around $20 for the houses that are within 175 feet, where part of the process is you find them $20 so that you could pay for the mailings that go to the 75, the hundreds, the, the homes within 175 feet distance? So you know for a fact that it's done. The cost isn't incurred by the county, it's still incurred by the citizen who had the infraction, but it's a $20 fee that pays for the postage and printing of the letters that go there. Have you ever, did you think of that?
No.
As a, as a possible solution to this, instead of, this way we know for a fact that it goes out to those homes?
But, Mr. Smith, it'd be another burden placed on Animal Control to make sure they receive that money. We don't want them receiving that money, frankly. You know, that, that --
Well, before the dog is released, they got to, they got to give a --
But you have to understand, this goes to be a responsible pet owner as well. And some of these provisions that are placed on these pet owners are done so, so they adhere to what the experts consider to be the, the principles of how to bring that dog back into their home. And if they don't want to do that, then they're not complying. And then that gives us more leverage to go back and violate them in that order.
Look, this is, this is certainly moving in the right direction. I'm not opposed to it. So, I mean, we can always come back and tighten these as well if we, if there's a trend.
I think the pet owners have more buy-in. They, they have to complete these things to have more buy-in. As you know, sometimes they don't. And with this law, we'll be able to go back and have more input on what dog gets sent where.
Okay. Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Fink. It's also important, I think, important to remember that vicious animals will not be going back.
They will not be going back.
Vicious animals will not be going back into the community or to the property owner.
There will be no question in the future if this bill passes.
So vicious animals are not back in the community either way.
All right. Well, with that being said, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 4.
Mr. Fink.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Mr. Peruka.
Hi.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Hi.
Mr. Walker.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
And Mr. Grasso.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 4 is adopted.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment 5.
Amendment Number 5. This is a technical amendment grammatically correcting the definition of vicious animal for clarity.
Motion to adopt.
So moved, Ms. Chair.
All right, I heard a second. Administration?
This is not our amendment, but we're good with this amendment.
Technical amendment.
Oh, that's right. Introduced by Mr. Fink, Walker, and Mr. Trumpauer.
It clarifies the definition.
All right. Nobody wants to say anything special? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 5.
Mr. Fink.
Hi.
Mr. Pruski.
Hi.
Mr. Peruka.
Hi.
Mr. Trumpauer.
Hi.
Mr. Walker.
Hi.
Mr. Smith.
Hi.
Mr. Grasso.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 5 is adopted.
All right. Bill Number 5917, its amendment will be heard on July 17, 2017. I want to call back on the table again, Bill Number 3417. Okay, so we're back over on to Amendment Number 20. So, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 20. Please be quiet, everyone, because we're out and roll. Thanks for your support. Love the pink shirts.
This amendment removes the requirement for current code, from current, from current code, that police-initiated tow procedures be promulgated, adds a requirement that a police tow manual that includes forms and procedures be prepared, adds a requirement that any subsequent changes to the police tow manual be approved by the county council, and sets a deadline for submission of the tow manual.
Move to adopt, Ms. Chair.
Second.
Give a second. Okay. All right, Mr. Smith, you want to chime in again?
So, so I believe, the intent of this, this resolution essentially was, at the end of the day, I really want the police department and the towing industry, as well as this body to some extent, to sit down at the table, sort of work through all the issues together, come up with a body of a code that everyone agrees is, is, is appropriate, and then we pass that, and then subsequent changes come before this body via the code submission process that's outlined in this amendment. So that, that is definitely the intent. The police have very valid concerns as far as being able to manage the process, and I think it's important that they, that they retain that capability and some of that capability. But I also hear the call for the, the towing side of the house, who may have some discrepancies on how things are put out. But at the end of the day, this, this brings both stakeholders together, I think, and so gets us into a position where we can sort of move forward, and everybody's sort of having a role in that process. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
With that being said, administration? With that being said, Administration?
First, I guess I have a technical question on this one, that this is saying that, again, I'm just reading it now, but "The police department shall prepare a tow manual to be approved by ordinance of the council that includes the forms and procedures required by the department for participation in police-initiated towing program." So that means that the procedures that are in the tow manual are part of the tow manual. Any forms related to towing is part of the tow manual. So that means if they change a form, you have to come back to the county council to get that form approved? That's what this says?
I, I think so.
So like a piece of paper? You change what a piece of paper says, and yet the police change what a...
I certainly believe within, if, within reason. I mean, certainly, if it's, if it's a name, or if, if the data is the same sort of data, but maybe you're just changing the way it looks. I mean, I don't think that the intent of that document changes, but if, if, if the data on the, on the sheet is, is, you know, adding or requesting more information, we can certainly work to, to reduce that. I mean, I'm not, I'm not a, sort of merry to sort of, uh, this process, like, things like that that could be fixed going forward. I'm certainly okay with it.
Maybe it just says the procedures rather than the forms and the procedures? Because I think it'd be pretty burdensome, like, anytime the police have to change a form, that they have to come back to the council and get approval of that through an ordinance, which takes three months, six months to get that completed. For, it doesn't seem like a good way to operate.
Would you trust me to, to know that I would come back removing that language in, in the future bill?
Obviously, you don't feel the same about that, so I don't think you would.
You have my word.
I mean, seriously, I mean, it's, you're, you're saying that if they change a form to say, you know, "Contact Tim Altomari instead of Bernie Marzick," they have to come back down and get an ordinance, which gets reduced.
How, how often do you change forms?
I defer it at least.
And I'll defer to the pro.
I mean, it's, part of it's licensing and permits. I mean, we've found over the years that certain things, certain data we needed, you know, a tag number wasn't on a form. In the case of the chief of police, we have a tow report form that we use internally for, for crime reporting and for that. So, I mean, the way that reads to me is, it doesn't say forms or, you know, reason, it just says forms. So if the chief wants to change our towing form, I guess we would have to go to the council. I mean, I get that, it's not that often, but it seems like if we do do something, it's going to take us sixty to ninety days to, to make an administrative change.
During this initial review, when those, when that document is, is developed, as well as the forms, is, is it, is the expectation that within six months of that being adopted, that it would potentially change?
Well, so, what the sergeant's talking about is some forms, like, have my name on the header, and let's be frank, the boss could fire me tomorrow if he wanted to, couldn't he?
That is true.
So, that kind of stuff would be a cost of doing business change that happens. If we get a, if we get a better deal from another printer, all of a sudden, say, off the top of my head, and it, and it necessitates a slight change in format or something, that's the kind of stuff he's talking about.
Just seems really unnecessary to me to put that in the code.
Mr. Trumbauer. You finished, Mr. Smith?
I'm finished. I, I just...
All right. With that being said...
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Maybe this is a question for the Office of Law, but something like changing the chief's name or changing formatting, would, would your view be that that would be substantial enough to kick this in? I mean, that seems like a de minimis change to me.
As, as drafted, it would.
It would.
If, if you said something to the effect of substantive change to the form, or something like that.
Is that a, is that a legal term?
Yeah, yeah. Substance, substantive material, something of that nature, then, then they could change the chief's name, or Dan Kane's name, and...
Thank, thank you. Can we, can we do that by voice vote and not have to draft another? No. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. With that being said, I guess what we're going to do is, we're going to call, pull forward on, call the vote on Amendment Number Twenty.
Mr. Fink.
Nay.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Nay.
Mr. Trumbauer.
No.
Mr. Walker.
No.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment Number Twenty is defeated.
Okay. So, Bill Number 3417, its amendment will be heard on July 17, 2017. Moving forward. Uh, let's see, we got, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 6117.
Bill Number 6117, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Positions in the Classified Service.
All right.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, the county executive's office with me at the table, Jackie Atkinson from Personnel, and Kelly Lovett from the Office of Law. Bill 6116 adjusts several classifications in the merit system. Automotive fleet manager to automo, excuse me, automotive fleet administrator to automotive fleet manager. Chief Road Operations is changed from NR 21 to NR 22. Facilities administrator to facilities manager, and we will also be offering two amendments at the appropriate time.
Okay. Anybody on the council, any questions? Seeing none. Open up the public hearing on 6117, if anybody wants to chime in. Seeing a movement in the crowd, we're going to close the public hearing on 6117. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 6117.
Bill Number 6117, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Positions in the Classified Service.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. There are a couple amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment changes the pay grade for the Assistant Chief Bureau of Highways from NR 19C to NR 21C.
Motion to adopt.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chair.
Get a second?
Second.
All right, I hear it. Administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, these are all changes that were made in the budget, and this is to reflect those changes appropriately in this bill.
Okay. With that being said...
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker?
Mr. Marzick, who's currently Assistant Chief Bureau of Highways?
Craig Africa.
I have no idea.
I thought that was, but I wanted to make sure.
Who's that? I have no idea.
Is it Mr. Africa?
We, we...
He's the highest highways guy.
We're changing the position, and we don't know, we don't know who it is.
I'm pretty sure it's Greg.
There are not any positions currently affected by this change, is what I have for this.
So it's a new?
Um, maybe it's a vacant position. I'm not sure if it's Greg.
All right. Jackie? Anybody know how much money we're talking here? Just, I know it's in the budget, but just for personal, if you know?
It's in the blue. No, no, it's not in the blue either, sorry. Well, you, you said this was contemplated in the budget, Mr. Marzick?
Yes. All of these changes are contemplated in the budget.
Okay.
Sure, we debated it back then.
All right. Well, I guess that, with that being said, all right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Uh, just want to note, we're not going to do anything on this till July 17. If you guys could come back with who, who is it, the people that affect this, and how much pay are we talking? Even though I know it's in the budget, I just want to know for my own personal reference when I need to get myself a county job. Okay. With that...
I think you already have a county job.
I better pay him one. How's that?
I thought you donated your salary anyway.
I do. A better donating one. All right. Oh, you gotta be quick today, aren't you, Trumbauer? Okay, I'm with it.
I literally can't help it.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment reclassifies a vacant position in the Department of Recreation and Parks from turf maintenance specialist to facilities construction supervisor pursuant to Section 61110 of the county code.
Move to adopt, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got it. Administration?
This is the same, Mr. Chairman. I have notes here to say there's only one person, one position is affected by this change. Mr. Anthony is here, if there's a specific question on who feels is filling these spots.
I'd much rather be a facilities construction supervisor than a turf maintenance specialist.
It does sound important.
Let that for the record.
Seems like a good title bump, Mr. Anthony.
It does sound good.
All right. With that being said, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two is adopted.
All right. Okay, let's see. Bill 6117, its amendment will be heard on July 17, 2017. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 6217.
Bill Number 6217, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Exempt Service Deputy Director, Department of Recreation and Parks.
All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, the county executive's
office with me at the table, Jackie Atkinson from Personnel, Kelly Lovett from the Office of Law, and Rick Anthony from Reckon Parks. 6217 creates the classification of deputy director of Reckon Parks in the exempt service. This position was approved as part of Reckon Parks fiscal year 18 budget. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Great. All right, anybody see anything? Nothing? Anybody was speaking? Open up public hearing on 6217, want to chime in? Seeing a movement in the crowd, we're going to close public hearing on 6217. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 6217.
Bill Number 6217, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Exempt Service Deputy Director, Department of Recreation and Parks.
Any discussion on the council? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on 6217.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 6217 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 6317.
Bill Number 6317, An Ordinance Concerning Deferred Retirement Option Programs, Fire Service Retirement Plan, Police Service Retirement Plan, and Detention Officers and Deputy Sheriff's Retirement Plan.
awful lot of retirement going on here. Administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, the county executive's office with me at the table, Susan Harrell and Ann Bokowski from Personnel, and Kelly Lovett from the Office of Law. 6317 removes the reduction of retirement benefits for retirees in the police deputy sheriff and detention officers pension plan when rehired under certain circumstances. This was part of negotiated agreement with the unions and fiscal year 18 bargaining agreements.
Okay.
We'd be happy to answer any questions.
It's interesting, because I saw Obie out here. He must've got too tired of waiting. I figured it's had something to do with him. Okay. With that being said...
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Marzick, we did get a letter, I believe, from the pension oversight, a year in receipt of that letter.
Yes, I was going to try to address that and have Personnel address that.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Harrell. Good evening, Ann Bokowski.
I've got it.
Hi. Ann Bokowski, Assistant Personnel Officer. This afternoon, the Office of Personnel did receive a copy of the Pension Oversight Commission's letter to the council opposing the legislation, offering amendments. The office is not supportive of the proposed amendments, as Susan can confirm. The intent of the legislation was to provide the same benefits for drop retirees as other employees that retire through a normal retirement and are rehired by the county, not to provide a greater benefit. There may have been some confusion on the commission, but the commission's proposed amendments would remove the language in the code regarding reemployment rules for all employees, not just for drop retirees.
So, as an example of that, Mr. Hammond always jokes about coming back and working for the county. If what the Pension Oversight Commission is saying, he could come back to the county and not have a reduction in his pension. That's not what was proposed. This was specifically to the police, the deputy sheriff, and detention officers. Their, their second suggestion was, remove this for everyone in the county.
Right. Since it sounded like you were suggesting that there might be some confusion, after the public hearing, would you have any objection if we held this to do a little bit more outreach to...
We've sent a response back to Mr. Atkinson right away.
Yeah, but I mean, it was all today, right? I mean, it was all kind of...
Yes. We just got the letter today, and we sent a response back right away. So...
But, but you haven't communicated to him since then?
He never responded back.
Right.
We sent, immediately sent a response back, saying, explain it.
Well, I'll make a motion at the appropriate time, but I'd, I'd like to at least give him a week to see if you guys can come to an understanding. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. So we're going to open up the public hearing on 6317, if anybody wants to chime in. Seeing a movement in the crowd, we're going to close the public hearing on 6317.
Move to hold this bill till the July 17.
All right. So let me go... Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 6317.
Bill Number 6317, An Ordinance Concerning Deferred Retirement Option Programs, Fire Service Retirement Plan, Police Service Retirement Plan, and Detention Officers and Deputy Sheriff's Retirement Plan.
Mr. Chair, move to hold the bill until the July 17 meeting, so that we can do some more outreach to the pension oversight.
Anybody give me a second?
Six.
Okay, here it is. Madam Secretary, please call the roll to hold 6317 until July 17.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 6317 to July 17 is passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of 6417.
Bill Number 6417, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Accessory Structures, Sheds, Garages, and Similar Structures.
Administration?
It's Mr. Walker's bill.
My bill, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Walker! Walker!
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. This is a bill, I've, I've actually run into this situation, this is the third time since my time on the council, that I've come across a constituent making this request, and, or explaining the situation to me, and in this particular instance, I decided to move forward with the, with the legislation. Basically, what this would allow, this bill, should it pass, one of my constituents, who you'll hear from and hear in just a few minutes, owns a lot that is adjacent to another lot. So he has two separate lots that are, share, share a boundary. And he would like to erect a shed on that second lot, but is currently not permitted to do that. And so, it seems to me that if somebody owns two lots and wants to build a shed on that lot, it's not a principal structure, like a, a house, although they have the ability to build a house, let's say it's a 2,000 or 3,000 square feet house, or whatever the lot size would allow, given the, the location of the lot, that they should be allowed to build a shed to store things in on that same lot. So, that is what essentially this bill does, and so I would ask for your support on 6417.
Administration?
We just have an amendment we'll be offering at appropriate time.
In, in general, you're okay with it?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. With that being said, we're opening up public hearing on 6417. Come on down. Just grab yourself a mic over there, and all I just need is your name and address in two minutes, please.
All right. My name is Joe Tucker. I'm from Gillsville, Maryland. What I have here, first, before we start, I've heard everything tonight, from opioids to haunted houses to buildings being built.
It is interesting.
You know, it's, it's everything. You know, mine's simple, I think. And what I got, I'll tell you what's happened here. I had a piece of property that's been in the, been in the family for 100 years. It was a three-acre parcel, about this size. Grandpa got a piece of it cut off about this size, to make it simple, all right? I built a house, I built a house on this parcel right here. I maxed it out to the impervious area. I've got this lot that's right here beside it, that sits right there. Okay, it's right there, connected to the property. I couldn't put a shed on here because of impervious area, because I maxed out. This property had a shed on it one time. I took it down. I should have asked, I should have got a shed grandfathered in before I took it down. But anyway, it's a two and a half, two and a half acre parcel. I could build a, probably a 10,000 square foot house on here if I wanted. So I wanted to put a 20 by 20 shed on here, because my garage is filled up, and I just wanted to, you know, I just needed a little extra room. So, I popped one on there, which I shouldn't have. County come in, and they say, hey, you need to take it down. I took it down, and then I tried to, you know, see if I could get a permit to put, you know, just a structure on here. And they said, no, you can't put a accessory structure, you can't put another structure if you don't have a primary building on there. So, if I had, I could, I could take this and put a 10,000 square foot house on it, but I can't put a little shed on it.
So basically, they want you to build a house so you can put a shed on it?
So I put a shed on it. Yes, exactly. And, like I said, I can see, you know, if you're right there, and it's a par, parcel is right there. Now, if you had something across the street, then I can see maybe somebody saying, well, maybe we might not want to do that, or maybe they do, I don't know. But I'm, I'm, I'm sharing two boundaries right here, and both of them are buildable lots, so I don't want to build them, I don't want to put them together right there. I've already built a house here. I'll lose a million dollars here. So it's like, why, you know, it doesn't make sense to me, that's all.
There's a lot of things that don't make sense, trust me.
I know.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Walker?
So, Mr. Tucker, just to clarify, because I, and the reason I'm clarifying is because you're up now, and we're about ready to deal with amendment that does exactly what you just described. So, when you went to the county to say, I'd like to build this lot, what they said was, no, except unless you re-merge the two lots back together and lose the buildable lots potential.
Right, right. That's what they were saying.
So, he can build a lot, he can build a shed if he wants, but he has to give up the lot in order to do it.
Right. I got to merge these two lots back together as one lot, then I can put a shed on it. Then I have enough impervious area. They say it's, impervious area is your problem. You only have so much impervious area on this lot.
Right.
Okay? And I said, well, okay, well, I got this lot over here, and so if it's an impervious area, and you let me build a 10,000 square foot house on here, why couldn't I put a 20 by 20 shed on it? That's only 800 square feet.
Right.
You know, so, whatever.
So he loses a buildable lot as his option, or build nothing?
Right.
It's one of the quirks.
So to me, I just thought, you know what, I'm just a guy down in the country down there, I just want to have a shed down there, just so I can clean my garage out, so I'm not stumbling through it, and, you know, it makes sense to me. So, that's what you guys are here for. You tell me what you think.
Roger that. Okay. Anybody else want to chime in on 6417?
Mr. Chairman, just, just real quick, Ms. Rhodes, is there any, and I'm, I'm not against this, but is there any unintended consequences for zoning designations, where somebody may try and, I don't know, game the system? I'm just, for him, you know, it obviously makes sense, but I'm thinking about the lot merger rule in cases that I've heard.
My understanding, based on how the law is crafted, we hope we've covered the unintended consequences, which would be the lot coverage issue, as well as protecting the character of the neighborhood. I think we've achieved both of them by having the amendment put into, in certain instances where merger may be appropriate.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. With that being said, we're going to close public hearing on 6417. There is an amendment, okay? Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 6417.
Bill Number 6417, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Accessory Structures, Sheds, Garages, and Similar Structures.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, please...
There's a minute.
Yeah, I'm getting ready to it. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment removes language that exempts sheds, garages, or similar structures built as accessory structures from certain lot merger requirements.
All right. Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Did I hear an echo?
I heard a thurnd there.
All right, that's good.
Did you motion in second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to Mr. Swain on this. This was an issue that came up through planning, zoning staff, and through the Office of Law, as this devils with principal uses opposed to accessories.
The previous practice of the Office of Planning and Zoning in these situations was to either require a lot merger or variance to allow an accessory structure without a principal structure, because the zoning law is set up that way. The reason that the Office of Planning and Zoning didn't think that this prohibition in 1842 or 3C was necessary is that that section only talks about merging lots for principal uses. So in other words, if you have a house that straddles a lot line, that's a principal use. It's going to require you to merge those lots. The accessory uses, which are covered in your bill, are not, obviously not, principal uses. So this, there would be no requirement from the Office of Planning and Zoning for a lot merger agreement if the bill passes with the accessory language in it, which is in 182204.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
So the reason that the Office of Planning and Zoning wanted to delete it from this section is that sometimes a lot merger agreement might be required even for an accessory structure, not because the accessory structure is on a separate lot, but because of other issues that might be associated with that accessory structure. So this section that you're...
Like what other types of scenarios? Like, so in other words, what you're saying, just so I, because I'm not an attorney, the, what you're saying is that he would be, based on what he's described, his situation would be allowed to move forward if the bill passed.
Correct.
But other types of situations? And what would those types of situations be, as an example?
Well, I mean, I guess the...